That is amazing. Is that amazing? That made my day. Yeah, I know. It's like. Yeah, Suzanne is gonna go like, wow Patty, that was fast. Okay, yes, are we ready to go?
It happens.
Well, no, I just like meet the right person. Okay, please join us for the pledge of allegiance for our Board of Commissioners meeting on April 4th, 2022.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, let's see, is anyone from our, it looks like Lynn, you're the person in charge for this? Yes.
In charge.
In charge, yes. City planner, senior city planner.
Or at least the lead presenter.
That would be lovely. Everyone just. Yeah, and just everyone introduce themselves so we get you on the permanent record.
And then I'm the least important part of this, so once we get situated.
Well.
Definitely not.
So Commissioners, hello, thank you for having us. I'm Lynn McCollum, the Housing Director for the City of Bend. It's great to be here today.
Hi, everyone. My name is Allison Platt and I'm now overseeing our core area tax increment finance district. And so serve as the city's core area project manager.
And I'm Amy Fraley. I'm the affordable housing coordinator with the City of Bend.
Thank you so much.
So we're here to talk to you about some work that staff has been doing with your staff and with other taxing districts to talk about potential property tax exemptions to benefit housing in Bend. So we wanted to sort of walk you through next slide. Oh, can we control it? Okay. It's all new being back in person.
I know, in person.
But it's nice to actually see faces today. I appreciate that. It's been a while. So we'll talk you through kind of how we've gotten to this point. We are looking, we originally scoped three potential property tax exemptions. We'll let you know where we are with staff recommendation on that. And talk a little bit about what's called the public benefit for one of the three exemptions, which is our way of ensuring that we're getting what we want out of this, you know, potential release of these funds that would not otherwise be coming to us. And really try to help ensure that you all know how to weigh into our council as we go forward. We are more than happy to take any feedback you have today if you're ready for that. But if not, we are continuing with our council and tend to have a work session with them on the 20th and then go forth for a public meeting on these after. So we wanted to make sure that although we are continuing to build the ship, that we are getting you the information that we have right now so that you can weigh in as appropriate with whatever your feedback may be. So that's sort of what our status is. Okay? So the idea here is really to get what we want from the market. We know regardless of how we all feel about land use laws in Oregon, we only have a limited amount of law of land within our UGB right now. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future, but we do know that we need to use that land as wisely as we can. And there's really been three main things that the community has been asking our council to do. One of those is they want to benefit affordable housing. One is that they want to benefit the middle income and the need for housing for our middle income population just above affordable housing. And the third is that they have expressed a desire to really concentrate density in our central area. That that seems to be the area that the public is most enthusiastic about bringing density to Bend is right there in that central.
So not to take too much away from this, but this is a very Bend thing. The public and the people and the legislative intent behind this and the density of a core urban area. Not everybody sees it this same same way. So this is, this is a core project in the City of Bend. It's exciting to know that this could be done. We, we limit land expansion and we, you know, we're very proud of our land use system, but we probably could have expanded a little more is my opinion. So I'm just letting you know, some of the words you used already, I'm like, oh, wait a minute. I don't know if I agree with that. So and I'm just sharing, just sharing.
Commissioner DeBonne, thank you for bringing me back to the larger picture. I do appreciate that. You're right. These are very Bend-centric right now in how we're scoping them because that's the main basis, right? And really, I think, thinking about how your goals as a commission would or would not intersect with these and what we're not thinking of today that we should be, that's really the goal here. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The idea is that these three were brought forward as opposed to other potential policy solutions to really respond to those three things that the Bend community is asking our council for. And that's sort of how we got to this point. What we're also seeing is different types of developments specifically in that central area than what we were anticipating. And so if that is the area of town that folks have slated for the densest development, love it or hate it, that seems to be the direction we're going.
Different opinions are available, yeah.
If that's what we're gonna do, let's make sure we're doing it well so that we're not spilling the density over into other areas where we might not want it as much, for instance. So we'll talk you through each of these three have very different purposes that we're gonna talk you through today. So I'm kind of mixing terms and themes here, but wanted to let you know that's sort of the basis for it. So we want to make sure that we are getting what we want from the market and this is one way of asking for that. Did you want to say anything else?
I will just, we are gonna be talking about another tax exemption program today that's not core area specific and that's the nonprofit tax exemption that Amy will talk about that. And we are recommending that to be a citywide eligible tax exemption program. We thought about whether we should include the expansion areas that would be more in county control. But we felt like that for any of those nonprofit, this is really intended to support deed restricted affordable housing for our nonprofit partners like COVO, Core. And we felt like it made more sense since they weren't likely going to develop when it was in county land for that to be within city limits only. And it would simplify the process, right? Working with you all to like wait until those properties are annexed for that tax exemption to apply to those. So I did, there are other exemptions that we're gonna be talking about today that aren't just within the central district. The middle income is another one that we have thought about being applied more broadly than the core area specifically. But the multiple unit property tax exemption program really is intended to try to incentivize development in the places that we've earmarked for that development to take place in the central area.
Let's go next. So you all have seen this little graphic before. This is what we use to describe what is affordable housing in Bend. And as you all know, to be defined as affordable, housing must be affordable to somebody making 60% of area median income and under. Or for a for sale product, 80% of area median income and other. One of the property tax, so the nonprofit property tax exemption that we'll be talking about today will use that 60% and 80% AMI threshold as some of the qualifying factors for obtaining that. So keep that in mind. The middle income property tax exemption would go up to 120% AMI. So that is that that range that you're looking at for that. The MPT program, which we'll talk about, it does not have an income limit on it, but did want to have a very quick recollection of what that is. We also pulled a handful of current rental listings in Bend right now and those are over on the right hand side. You can see how that just does not match up with what folks can pay in our community. Even some of these larger multifamily complexes that are, you know, some of them are a little bit older even, not available to a good portion of our population. So wanted to point that out as well. And of course, my slide is already way out of date because the roof has grown since we put this together. And we are now quite a bit above that 650,000 median price in Bend, so.
So what number are you actually, should it be, is it 740?
I think last I saw it was about 740. It might have even been higher, but I'll have to look at the most recent report to confirm. Either way, huge mismatch between what folks can pay, what's available on the market and, and, and that difference that we need to figure out how to retain our workforce if that is of interest to us. Okay?
Thank you.
Some wages are raising, so there's different wage scales happening right now too. So there's, everything seems to be a moving part and that's the scariest thing here is, you know, if we had one thing not moving, we could work with it, but everything seems to be moving.
It's a wild ride, isn't it?
Yes, right now.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I mean, we are all in this mix right now trying to figure out which one's up and how to, how to bring some order. So here's your tax bill. Anyone who lives in the City of Bend, I guess that's not all of us at this, in this room. The vast majority of this tax bill does go to Ben LePine schools. Again, this is if you are a resident of the City of Bend. City of Bend makes up about 21.2% of that. And then the county comes in with just under 15%. Why this dollar bill is important to you today is because the property tax exemptions that we are talking about require 51% of taxing districts to approve in order for the full balance of that property tax to be exempted. So individually, we each, if City of Bend does move forward with these proposals, could exempt our own portion at any point. But in order for the full tax bill to be relieved, folks have to get 51% of districts to approve. What that typically ends up meaning is us in the school district. Though I will tell you that of the existing exemption that we have in place right now, I traditionally ask our developers to come to you as well and come to Parks District as well to ensure that you get a say in that and get to have your voice heard before they come to us or to the school district to make those sort of final determinations. So just know that that's out there. I think that it is absolutely essential that we do respect the fact that these could go through with just the City of Bend and the school district approving. And so wanted to make that very clear to you all that there is that chance that folks could just come to entities and ask for, on a project by project basis. So just wanted to point that out because you are a smaller part of the tax bill in City of Bend than you are in other places. So does that make sense? Did you wanna, did I cover that? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're doing similar presentations to the school district.
Correct.
Park and Rec and other large, other, other entities that represent large proportions of the.
Correct. We've had two staff level meetings with really everyone, including some of the ones that aren't even, that are kind of in the, you know, asterisk column right there, the smaller districts. And then are trying to visit each of the elected boards that are interested in hearing from us before we go to our council. So not everybody wants to have us and that's okay. But certainly want to be sure that we're providing info to those of you who do.
The other thing to keep in mind is Deschutes County, while on this graphic represents 14.8%, you also oversee, I believe, the budgets for 911 service districts.
And sheriff.
And sheriff's office. So there is a little bit, you have some of the asterisk as well under your purview. So I know Nick has been representing that interest very well, so I wanted to make sure that was clear.
I have a question. It says library on here 3.5, but is this, has this been done after the library bond issue?
Because. And this would only, we're still actually meeting with the assessor's office this week to clarify how this impacts bonds. But from my understanding, this would only impact the basic tax rate.
Okay, only the basic rate.
But I'm still, I'm again, meeting with the assessor's office this week. So want to make sure that we completely understand how this impacts or doesn't impact existing or future bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And thanks for Scott's time.
Okay.
I did too.
So nonprofit, we'll hand it over to Amy.
So the nonprofit property tax exemption is exactly what it sounds like. It's for 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(4)'s. And so it was put into place in 1985 and I have to apologize, I just got new contacts and so everything is blank. So if I miss one of the bullets, feel free to read them out loud. It's widely in use across the state in multiple cities. And one of the great things about this exemption is that the affordability or the exemption can last as long as the period of affordability. So it's not capped at 10 years or anything like that. We can continue to see it move forward as long as it meets the criteria. There's also not a unit minimum. And so what we would hope to see is some of that missing middle housing come into play in the form of single homes, duplexes and triplexes. So the other part is we were mentioning is the 60%. So folks, when they come in that first year are at 60% of AMI. But what we would hope for is with increased stability, so we're looking at that 48,000 for a family of four, they'll go up to somewhere around 80% that second year and they can maintain their housing instead of not being income qualified any longer. So it definitely supports stability. What else? It can be allowed in any part of the city is what we're recommending. Are you moving for me, Lynn?
No, I'm gonna have to get you my, my slide back up close.
And the biggest con we see are when we talk to folks about this is there's an administrative burden for the nonprofits. So every year they need to come forward with an application that has to be approved by the city. And with that, I think we can go ahead and move forward.
So the, for the same exemption, they need to renew it every year?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so what the city is committed to at the direction of the city council is to make that application as easy as possible. Thanks Lynn, I should have done this already. I didn't realize how blurry it would be. So when we talk about partners that would be utilizing this exemption, Ally already mentioned that COVO or Core, but also Habitat is really important because this exemption can be for bare land. And it can be held, as you know, it takes sometimes a long time to put these projects into place. And so it can be for bare land, which would be particularly helpful for Habitat. We've pulled an example here. It's a COVO property that many of you may know came online last fall. Were two folks that were homeless veterans. And you can see how their tax burden went up considerably with development. So the portion that is the county is about $733 annually to support a property like this. And that's pretty much what we have on nonprofit, unless you've got questions.
So just acknowledging the Core Community Land Trust is in there. So is all the activities of the Core or just the land underneath it? Cause I think in those, those beautiful little cottages are equity ownership. But then the land is in trust, so how does that fit in there?
So the exemption applies to the entire property owned by the nonprofit. So a lot of those cottage, like all those cottages, right? The land itself is owned by Core and, and the ownership, like they're gaining equity into their building. But that, that whole property would be tax exempt.
But then income limited also. Are they doing all their properties like that?
So the cottage itself is still taxing sound?
That's our understanding. And again, we're clarifying and ensuring that we have the right understanding later this week. But the important piece of that is that it helps for long-term affordability and helps those folks retain that ownership as well as helps that unit become and remain affordable for the next transition of ownership. Cause that will continue to be affordable for the next sale, if that makes sense, for perpetuity. So it just reduces the overall cost that has to be covered upon resale, sale or resale. Does that make sense?
Okay. So this is maybe a question for them, but are all their properties income limited then also?
Yeah.
So yeah, I guess I didn't understand that, that.
But it goes up to 80% the second year, which I think.
It can, or it can stay at 60.
Okay, but I do think it's great if people are going to be in their home and they're working and things are going better in their life, it's nice that they're allowed to make more money.
Well, but if it's equity ownership, are we gonna be asking people not to make more than 80%?
So here's the deal.
Does it break out at some point?
You qualify upon that initial sale.
Getting in, okay.
If you go forth, Commissioner DeBonne, and become a rock star after we are.
Well, that's what we want people to do, exactly.
Then you're gonna move out and buy your house on Aubrey Butte and that home becomes available for the next person.
Well, so.
Or any number of other places, you choose.
As an owner though, I mean, if you start making too much, you can't own?
You can't qualify for the first ownership. If you get into that home and you start making money, that's awesome because we know that.
Then that tax credit will go away.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, so that's, that's what would happen.
Sorry.
So I'm just, you know, I'm thinking of geez, if somebody, if they're both working and somebody gets a raise and they get advanced and all of a sudden the whole thing turns sideways, that'd be bad.
Then we want, then we want taxes out of you. Yeah.
Yep, yep, exactly. You're a rock star. We'll take them.
So I'm, I'm still trying to digest this COVO example. So last year was before the house was developed. This year is with the house. And, okay, it's total property tax difference of $2,200 a year. And so that $2,200 is what would be exempted.
Correct.
Okay.
It would, no.
Sorry, the entire, sorry, I'm not looking at that.
No, it would be the. It would be the entire amount. So the full 3,000.
3643.
Okay.
So it's land and structure. It's the entire.
And this is, this is one, how many, how many units of housing are in this? It's a duplex, okay. So basically 1,800, 1,800 of tax exemption subsidy per unit in this case.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And COVO was very much part of the inspiration also for this because you all may remember we have one property tax exemption in place for affordable housing right now in City of Bend. That's ORS 307.515. That one has a limit of 20 years, right? So you can only have the exemption for 20 years and it's required to be five or more units. And so when COVO came to us saying we only have money to construct a duplex, that's all we can do. What can you do for us? There was nothing. And this feels like exactly what we need to do to help promote that info from those small nonprofits that really can't otherwise. I mean, this amount of money, 3,600 to COVO is a really big deal. That's gonna make a massive difference, whereas to us taxing districts may be a little less of an impact. Even for all 20 something units that they have, that's not a significant amount. So they were a huge part of the momentum for us really bringing this one forward. Though there are others as well out there who are interested.
And I will say that they call about once a month.
Yeah.
And ask about the status and they offered to come today with us to say that they really would appreciate any kind of assistance that they can get to move forward.
COVO, if you're listening, we appreciate your work. Thank you.
They are amazing. They do great work and thank you for being so forward thinking to get this done for them. Yeah.
The nonprofit that's associated with COBA?
Yeah, building partners.
Building partners. They would qualify for this category as well?
Yeah, so with all of these, so with this one potentially, it depends on the type of home that they're building. This is a rental development exemption. However, you can hold, you can use this exemption for the land that's being held for development. So they could potentially use it in that interim point where they're still scoping out what the financing is gonna look like, what all the pieces come together. That could be exempted in that rental housing is what, once it's constructed, what's actually by state law allowed to be exempted from this one, once it goes forward. Does that make sense?
Yes, although now, now I'm confused how we can do the core projects under this.
Yeah, so we're gonna confirm all of that, but I think because of the land lease element, that's the element that gets us there for Core. So, yeah.
And then for the Habitat?
For Habitat, same deal. So if they develop in land lease, it's sort of the same thing. And in that holding period until they get to that point, because it takes so long sometimes, that's the timeframe that we would work with them.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Next. Oh, I don't know, you may have said this already, but just to be 100% sure, nonprofit staff is recommending that that is a citywide exemption within our UGB. Once folks annex in.
Within city limits.
Within city limits. Once folks annex in, then they could be eligible to apply for this. But we did not want to leave that much time potential out there to exempt a property because they're not actually ready to build until they're annexed in anyway, if that makes sense. So, okay. So next is middle income. This one has proceeded a bit since initial. So what is interesting to me personally about this exemption is that it's one of the few tools we have to really promote middle income housing. There's just not a lot out there. And the reason for that is that this is kind of a new thing. Until recently, we didn't need to think about what we're gonna do for this population as much because they could already buy a home on the market or rent a home on the market. But our challenge has gotten so significant that this population now is really, really facing some, some big uphill battles. And so that's why this is coming into play. So this exemption is in place in Tillamook County. They were the ones who piloted it. And they're the only ones right now who have it in place. I do know that City of Redmond considered it and chose not to proceed with it recently. So John Roberts was part of some of our conversations with Tillamook as we were really trying to look at how this might work. But they chose not to move forward with that. So the reason that, so today, the staff recommendation is that we hold off on implementing this. So I just wanna say that upfront, but I will tell you why as we proceed here. The reason is that this is a 10-year property tax exemption. And the way that it is categorized is a scale. The length of that exemption is based by state law on the number or percentage, the percentage of units that are in that development that meet this qualification threshold as middle income. So if you, in this 10-year framework, the way Tillamook does it, if you have 10 units in your entire building, one is affordable under this definition, what I call qualified, you would get a one-year property tax exemption and that's it. If all 10 units, 100% are income qualified, then you would get a full 10-year exemption. And it would scale within that. So it's only based on that. What we realized is that when doing some of the math with this, we had the potential even either not giving enough or giving way too much. And we couldn't find that right mix of the formula that felt like it was sort of helping the developer get there so that we're incentivizing them to bring this type of unit online without giving away the whole shop. So the math is just not workable for Bend in the way that we. So the math is just not workable for Bend in the way that we felt responsible in bringing it forward. So as we discovered this, we want to keep this one on the table, but our recommendation today is to go back at the state level and see if we can get that formula tweaked a little bit to actually make it workable, so that we're not giving away the baby with the bathwater, if that makes sense, and that it really is promoting affordability in the way we want. Yes?
We have a genius here in our finance department named Dan Emerson, and I would actually, if I were you, I would talk to Dan, because when we were doing our grant funding the other day of the 2.5 million, we actually ended up having a scale like this, you know, at a certain point. And it was great math that he came up with. So, you know, and I feel like this group is so important for our community. If we can figure out some way to do it, you know, we had somebody come to us that had like this kind of a workforce, and there was no help for them.
Yes.
And truly, they need some help, because you look at this, this is like barely maybe a one-bedroom, yeah, maybe a two-bedroom if they're really lucky, so, yeah. What if they have a family?
Right. Chair Adair, that's exactly it, is that we recognize that this is an element of our population that has very little to incentivize, to really get this type of housing moving. And also, what was exciting to me is that I was hoping, and we've seen signs of our market-rate developers wanting to provide housing that is more affordable. We really are fortunate to have an incredible development community that recognizes the issues and want to contribute here, I think. I don't know that every community has that. And they want to be part of the solution, but they don't have the way to make the math work on their end either. They cannot build for the prices that we need them to in order to serve this community. And so I agree with you. I think that the work group that we've been working with, really, we were a little nervous to tell them that the math was just not something we could buy off on, because they're very interested in this, too. So we're not taking it off the table, it's very much still in consideration. We just couldn't really present it in the right way to you all and feel like it was a good idea today. So we'd like to go back. So we'll talk to our council about whether we can consider making some state-level changes to this to make the formula work a little better for this region. Just the math is so different on the coast than it is here with incomes and everything else. So that's sort of where we got to. So just know that that's out there, and we wanted to at least have you aware that this is out there and know sort of what our plan is for this one going forward. But we're very interested in seeing if we can make this work.
Well, I think it's just such a huge need in our community that the sooner we can figure out a way to do it.
Agreed. We'll come back to you for a letter of support for that.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, no.
Legislative fix.
Yeah.
I think we found very specific recommendations that we could advocate at the state level to tweak the legislation slightly, to really make it be effective for Bend and to also maximize the benefit that we get out of this exemption program. And so I think our goal with our April 20 council check-in is to really say, hey, can we get some staff direction to advocate at the state level to make some modifications to this legislation?
Right. I think the work group, too, it's indicative that no one is using it, except Tillamook County. There's certainly cities, including Redmond, that have taken a look, but we can't make it work. And so we think there will be wide consensus, looking to make those changes on a statewide level.
Oh, I guess we'll be talking to Chair Yamamoto, or maybe he's not the chair this year, but anyway, he's the commissioner from Tillamook, and he's, yeah. I'll give him a call and see what he can recommend, you know? Why is it working there so much?
They haven't seen anyone use it there.
Really? Of course they haven't.
What's so interesting to me also in Tillamook County is it different, you know how we hit that 51% and everybody's exempted? They actually got that upfront from all of their taxing districts. Because the need is so great, they got everybody to agree to more or less by right exempt anyone who came through meeting these qualifications for some term, five years or whatever it was, and they've seen nothing. So I think that shows me that, you know, there's maybe some room for some tweaks that we all could benefit from.
Room for improvement.
Exactly. Okay, so now we're going to the more complex one. Y'all still with us?
Sure.
Here we go.
So on this one, you are not recommending anything until the statute is changed?
Correct. So we will ask for permission from our council to work with our, I'd say, larger-
Our lobbyists?
Thank you. Our lobbyists to get it all done at the state level if we can make some tweaks.
Okay.
Okay, well, I get the fun one. So I'll be talking about the multiple-unit property tax exemption program. Some of you, I believe, were around when Matt Stewart, kind of predecessor, came and probably spoke to the county about this tax exemption program. And we were pretty close to moving forward with adoption of this program right before COVID, and then COVID hit, everything froze, Matt left the city, and so it kind of got put on a back shelf. And it was only recently that we had development interest in this program again, so we're bringing it back for consideration to help support some of our housing goals. So the multiple-unit property tax exemption program, very similar to the nonprofit, the city would adopt an ordinance to make this a program within our Bend Municipal Code, but each project itself would need to be approved by resolution. And again, for that full exemption, that would include participation from all the taxing districts, it would require both at least the school district and the city to approve those projects by resolution in order for the project to receive the full exemption. This program is really intended by state statute to be focused in CORE and transit-oriented areas. That was always sort of the intent of the program by the state statute itself. What, with this exemption, it doesn't exempt the full property. So it's different from the nonprofit exemption where both the land and the structure are exempt from property taxes. This would only apply to the improvements or the structures on the property. So the land continues to be taxable in this case. This exemption is really focused on, it's intended to be a 10-year property tax exemption with the goal of trying to encourage or incentivize denser development that would have a higher taxable, you know, value per acre than you would maybe see without this exemption program. And then the idea is that after that 10 years, it comes back onto the tax rolls and that we all see a greater benefit than we would have, similar to the kind of promise of an urban renewal district, but a shorter timeframe. The exemption, in this case, could also be extended beyond 10 years if an affordable or low-income component of the project was included. We are considering this program as a 10-year program, that kind of being the cap. Trying to think if there's anything else on this slide. Yeah, so again, that 51% of the taxing district participation in order to get that full 100% exemption. What you can do with this program, or what is really unique or special about this program and why we decided to pursue this exemption program instead of the vertical housing development zone program, is that the city or the municipality can really write the rules of this program and require specific public benefits be met in order to qualify for the exemption. And the state statute has some public benefit sort of suggestions that are primarily focused on income, you know, rental levels for the unit or affordability of the units, as well as things that would last longer than the exemption itself. So public benefits that would exceed the length of the exemption. And so we have looked at four programs across the state to look at what, how they structure their programs and use that, as well as input from our community stakeholders. We had a working group that we were working with comprised of city committee representatives to help us identify what the public benefit requirements that we would require for our program here in Bend to be. And so we've sort of kind of organized what those public benefits would be and sort of priority public benefits, things that the community really wants to see, things that we still want to see, and then things that are probably a little bit easier for a developer to include as a way to kind of categorize some of the public benefits that we've been considering. So these really focus on, you know, at least 10% of the units being deed-restricted affordable housing as a potential qualification for this program. If you weren't providing those 10% of units as deed-restricted affordable housing, at least 30% of the units as middle-income housing. And those have been, you know, buyer work group, that's sort of the priority public benefits that they would really like to see from developments that qualify for this program. Offering childcare facilities is another one, given the demand and the need that we have in the community to fill that gap of offering childcare facilities. What we've heard, especially from the Park District, is, you know, having the childcare facility is only half the problem. We also need service providers, and so they are really supportive of having an in-lu of fee that would go, be distributed to childcare providers in the community. So Boys and Girls Club, we haven't kind of fully written exactly how we would distribute those fees yet, but that's sort of the intention behind that childcare or in-lu of fee. Same thing, open space dedication, this is a really big priority by our Park District, or some sort of in-lu of fee that would be based on land costs in the central and core area, since they have a goal of developing park space within the core area. Offering ground floor commercial within the development to really incentivize or encourage mixed-use developments. And something that I should clarify, too, is with this program, it's only going to apply to the residential portion of the project. So it's going to be the residential improvements only that are exempt. So in some cases, or some case studies that we've looked at, sometimes that's only, you know, 85% of the improvement value that is exempt, because they're, you know, maybe they're doing the ground floor as commercial uses. So there is still at least a portion of the taxes that continue to go to the overlapping taxing districts, or in the case where it falls within the core area, it's enough where you all still receive your frozen base, and the CORE TIF district is still collecting some tax base as well, more than it would have without the development moving forward. Energy efficiency and green building features are another public benefit that we're highly considering to try to incentivize with this exemption program. So you can kind of see the list. I think something that we're really interested in hearing from the county are, are there public benefits on this list that you feel are missing, or you would really like to see sort of prioritized as a requirement in order to qualify for the program? And the way that we're still sort of playing with exactly how we'll organize the requirements, but the thought is maybe you need to meet at least one from each list, or maybe one from the, you know, two from the first list, or two, you know, two from each list. So I think we're still navigating what's the appropriate level to ask for, how to organize those requirements. So I think getting county input onto what your priorities are would really help us in crafting what those public benefit requirements really look like. So, yeah, that's kind of what I have to present on the multiple-unit property tax exemption today, and then we can kind of talk about sort of next steps or feedback that we've started to hear from taxing district staff, some of the communications that we've had, and then sort of process, schedule, next steps. But I'll pause if there's more specific questions on the MFT program.
So if I'm tracking correctly, the vision is to use this in the center, the core of the city. Is that specifically clipped to the TIF area?
The current recommendation, based on our last work group meeting, is to focus it to the CORE TIF area, as well as the city has some high-density residential zoning that's really adjacent to the CORE TIF area, that's outside of it technically, along Fourth Street, as well as Irving Avenue. A lot of it is pretty built out, but there's a couple lots that are still vacant that are pretty challenging to redevelop. That's why they haven't been developed yet. And so the thought was to really try to help incentivize some of the more intense development that could take place on that Fourth Street corridor, but really keeping it within that central district. We were originally looking at including the Century Westside mixed urban zone into this program as well, over by OSU Cascades, but we felt like the market was already supporting development in that area, and we didn't really need to incentivize it with this program. So it will really be focused to that CORE TIF area, so most of the impacts actually won't impact the overlapping taxing districts, because you'll continue to receive your frozen base. It's really the CORE TIF area that will likely receive the highest impact from this program, and that's why we're really suggesting that it be limited term. So we are looking at like a seven-year program cap on this program with a review after 1,000 units are developed with the program. And I think what we really heard from our work group was that we really need to incentivize development in the Bend Central District in particular, because it just has so many development challenges that it faces with the high parcelization, the lack of infrastructure. But we do also think it's a valuable tool to kind of be at the table with development, to start to ask for things that we, what we want back. We're not seeing mixed income or, you know, 10% of units being deed-restricted affordable housing in some of the developments being proposed unless there's support for them to do that.
And in terms of tax implications for us, I mean, in the Bend Central District, because of the TIF, you know, we're receiving the base tax we were receiving before, and that won't be affected by this exemption.
Yes, and I did confirm that with the tax assessor last week.
So, I mean, there's really not a lot of financial impact for the county with the application of this in the central district.
And I mean, there'd be a couple parcels potentially on Fourth Street that could take advantage of it. I guess I forgot, the other development type that we would qualify for this program is that HB 3450 program that allows up to 40 acres of commercial zoned land to be developed as standalone residential. So that could potentially be without, outside that CORE TIF area, but the likely uptake of that is still limited. So it's pretty focused. I don't, I mean, it'll definitely, it could definitely have impact, but I'm not expecting it to be enormous, especially now that we're not looking at that Century Westside area.
Okay, thank you.
It's more my budget that's going to be impacted.
Oh, gosh, Allison.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, just, so for clarity, yeah, so it's already a tax increment finance cap for existing jurisdictions, the increase in values to be reinvested in that downtown area, and you're saying that that's where these tax programs will be out of, is that other future money?
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think that it's definitely something that we still want to be mindful of, of impacting the revenue that we have to reinvest into the area, but this is sort of an intended use of those urban renewal funds, is to support these types of developments. And so I think what we would do is, we would structure this program in a way where you couldn't utilize this program and also receive like a major, you know, investment from the TIF area on top of it, right? So we would monitor those two things with specific developments, like, we're not going to give you like 5 million in TIF funding for your development and this annual exemption program, right? So we would really be monitoring how a development is taking advantage of the different tools.
Well, that's where the partnership with the developers at the table and everybody getting to see everything that's happening.
And it would have to come forward, right? It would have to be approved by council as a resolution for each individual project, and they would need to demonstrate how they're meeting the public benefit requirements.
Great.
And the idea here is the long game, too. You know, seven years of potentially having this program in place, the idea is that at the end of that 10-year period where anyone was exempted, we're getting way more development and ideally way more TIF than we would have had we remained status quo. So it's a little bit of a sort of long game there, I guess, or delayed gratification, but if we're doing it right and we're scoping it right and keeping that limitation in place, hopefully we will get what we need to out of the market. And I do think that other districts have had strong feelings about what that limitation was, whether it's 1,000 units, whether it's a hard cap, whether it's seven years or 10 years or whatever that is. So that may be something that you all choose to weigh in on if you have strong feelings about what those limitations are. I, you know, that's well within reason for us to work with you on that.
So you asked about, yeah, what benefits would we, our opinions be, or something? I mean, I like the mix of ideas here. I can see that every one of them is, you know, kind of a give and take. Well, you know, let's have some more open space in this place we're trying to make dense, so that means to go higher, which is very expensive. So, and then, you know, energy efficiency is always an investment upfront, also. So it's good just to see the palette of ideas here, but I don't have a lot of direction I could output to it at this time.
Yeah.
I thought that was a pretty good list of public benefits. I couldn't think of anything off the top of my head to add to that, and in some ways, you know, I worry that the more complicated you make things, the less people will use them. So, I mean, if that's, if that hits, if that's a greatest hits already, then like, you know, I don't need to mess with your list.
Yeah, it's a balancing act between asking for enough and not too much to make it unusable.
Yeah.
Truly, you want it usable, so that's important.
At like the really high conceptual policy level, I want to ask the question about whether, what would be the difference between trying to achieve these goals through tax abatement or just collecting the taxes and subsidizing the stuff that you want? I mean, is there, you know, that the same development, you know, the COVO duplex, I mean, you know, if we, if you just kind of didn't create complicated tax exemptions, collect taxes from people, and then just gave them a chunk of money upfront- and then just gave them a chunk of money upfront, is, in what ways is that better? And what ways is that worse than this tax abatement approach?
I think there's a million different ways to answer that, and I'll let you jump in after I give it a go. The first has to do with sort of how much financing you need upfront to get the thing financed at the bank level, let's say, versus ongoing operations needs long-term. Also, if you look at the Kovo duplex, I mean, that's not necessarily the product that we're looking at here. But just for simplicity's sake, since you all saw those numbers, the total exemption that they would receive from us for property taxes was what? Under, you know, five grand, right? Or something like sixty, I can't even remember. I've already, but it's not a lot. Compared to the amount of subsidy that that product would need to even just get off the ground, this is a very small amount potentially. And I'd say the other thing is, is that, and obviously my program is sort of my frame of reference for giving out funds, cash subsidy, et cetera. Folks have sort of a scoped project by the time they come to us for money. And so, you know, we ask them to have something that is more or less shovel ready. And as you all know, you want to find that product that's going to move forward or that, that development is going to move forward. And so you need to see those pieces in place by the time it comes to you for money. Most of us are not interested in funding somebody who just has a concept. Whereas the MPT program, we can start those discussions with development at the concept stage and say, these are the priorities that are important to the city. How can you help us meet those needs? So I think that that timing is also like, this really gets us in at the ground level in theory. If folks are interested in working with us and interested in this property tax exemption. Sometimes I have development come to me with more or less fully flushed out products to build, and they just need that little bit of money. So there's not a lot of changes, you know, we can make at that point in the affordable housing realm. And I think it's true at the market rate as well. So that's sort of my initial thought on, on some of the differences. We are an alley in her role as core area project manager, project manager? I don't even know what your title is. The person who's going to make the core area do the things we want it to, is looking at all of those things as well. So we will continue, I mean, that was part of the discussion in the work group is, hey, can we make our SDC financing program more functional? Maybe that helps with this and we don't need the MPT program on quite the same level or on every project. So very much still looking at those incentives and that's what Valley will continue to do. This just felt like to some degree low hanging fruit because so many other communities are using it in the exact way that we are trying to for the central district. Did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I, we've had those conversations in the work group of can't we just exempt their SDCs? And that's potentially less money that we have to give away. But it might make more of an impact to the developer because a lot of those, right? The risk a lot of times is in the upfront cost versus the exemption program is really helping to reduce annual operating expenses, right? I guess I would say that there, and maybe this is like the pains of bureaucracy, right? Just the ways that our laws are in place, it's really hard to, for a city to do that. And then I think with the tax exemptions, it's a, it's a, it's an annual cost that you're letting go of versus the SDC exemption, right? Is like all, it's an all upfront impact to the developer, but it's also an all upfront impact to the city, right? So we're, you know, we as taxing districts are annually collecting this revenue source that we're able to slightly exempt. Versus if we were to take that money that we're going to slowly exempt over time, it's a lot harder to give it up as an upfront giveaway. So it really has to do a lot with just like legal challenges of like, this is a, this has an opportunity and an open path to move forward with. The SDC doesn't as much, and then just cash in hand, the city doesn't necessarily have the ability to distribute some of its future tax revenue to like an SDC program in the same way that we can annually exempt something.
Okay.
The commissioner is of course more than welcome to continue to weigh in to us after today as well. But Commissioner Tang, if that's something that you would be interested in, I'm happy, I'm taking notes here in the background, happy to sort of add that to some of our taxing district feedback. If that's, so you know, continue to look at other incentives that might also help do the same thing. That's, that's a reasonable piece of feedback we could provide to council. So I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
I'd be, I was, I, that was more like a philosophical question. But something that I would like to see in, in future analysis is, you know, this example, the, the Kovo duplex example was actually super helpful. To, to really wrap my, you know, I, I understand that before you set all the parameters for a program, it's hard to have an example. Because you don't know like how long you're going to exempt this for, like what's going to be, you know, what public benefits are going to be eligible. You know, like it's, it's a, but, but having, having like an example to kind of wrap your head around and then mentally scale. Like, oh, and there could be a lot of this, or, you know, there'll just be another five of these. It, it is really helpful for kind of just understanding the financial impact like that, 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 that Kovo example is like, oh, eighteen hundred bucks a year. You get, you get, you get a unit of, of affordable housing for a veteran family. I mean, that's, that's a, you know, I can, I can, I can grasp that very easily. And it, you know, it seems like a very worthwhile, you know, worthwhile thing to abate taxes for.
We did actually put that together with specific case study examples of different development types that was sent to taxing district staff. We just didn't quite, we didn't want to overwhelm everyone with a lot of numbers and graphs and things like that. But that is something that Nick has in hand that, that he should be able to share. We can share it directly with you all if that's helpful.
Commissioner, commissioners, if I can just ask, was that in the Q and A?
We just sent it.
Or this was?
We'll get it to you, we'll get it to the top of your email box today if that works.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate because you, I did show with the commissioners, the initial questions and responses that you provided. And I'll just share with commissioners that your coordination has just been outstanding. Your responsiveness to our questions has been really, really helpful as this discussion continues. As you are doing everything you can to help meet this critical community need of housing, workforce, affordable, all types of housing and in the locations that are the most beneficial to everybody, which is, which is really terrific. And our nine-one-one director, Sarah Crosswhite, and Sheriff Nelson have been involved in the discussions. And certainly it's, you know, we don't need to overanalyze it, but I think it's, we continue to talk about, you know, the benefits versus the cost of those increased services that we would be foregoing with, with the tax exemptions. And those are just the tough decisions that we, that we face as, as a community. And why it's so helpful to understand what the magnitude of the exemptions may be compared to the benefits that, that are being provided. So again, the, the city of Ben team has just been terrific to work with through this process and clearly continuing to move forward quickly.
Well, I think that that's about all we have. We may have had one or two, oh, here we go, yeah, schedule from here.
It's April now.
Yeah, we are in April. April twentieth will be our work session with council to get a little more direction. So I would encourage this group, if you have very strong feelings on any of what we've talked about today. It would be most helpful if you could get that back to either us or to the council directly before that April twentieth date. However, they will not be making a decision on that night. So we do have additional time, it's just you all know how that goes. Sometimes earlier is a little better to plant the seeds when there's a lot of testimony coming in. So please feel free either work through Nick and he can get it to us, or however you see fit. We are wide open to any suggestions, thoughts, parameters you'd like to put in front of us. And we will continue, Commissioner Dare, to look at that middle income one as well and see if we can make some changes.
Well, I just know it's needed.
It is, it really is. So anything else for my team before we wrap?
We would be looking, if, if we do get council direction, we would be looking at like a May eighteenth public hearing and adoption date for those programs as well. That's kind of the date we have earmarked on our schedule.
And happy to answer any additional questions that may come up if you have time to think about it and they arise. So with that, Nick, I'm sure we have taken up far too much time. I'm surprised to not see your big hook yet, but thank you for letting us talk through these and good to see you all.
Commissioner Dare is running the meeting, it's up to her.
I, I saw there was.
Only five minutes.
You could get him to bring the, you know, the goons in to get rid of us or something.
We're only five minutes over the calendar and because you may have, you may answer some of my great needs today. When you leave, we'll be, we're good. So thank you so very much. Thanks for joining us today. And yes, truly the community is in need of more housing. So, thank you. Five minutes isn't bad. Some days we're on time and other days it's a little bit.
It's a Monday.
Yes, Emily, thank you for joining us in person.
Of course, thank you for having me. I, I feel like you're probably thinking that you were going to get away with not seeing me for another few weeks, but here I am. So you didn't get away with it.
No, no, we love it.
Well, good afternoon and thank you for having me. I actually have a name change, so for the record, my name is Emily Horton, formerly Freeland. And I am here today for a discussion on the extension of four COVID nineteen limited duration positions for six months. So that would take us through fiscal year twenty-three. This request is funding neutral, so the funds have been identified through cost-saving measures. Either leveraging FEMA funding to cover some of the costs of this staff. These are primarily vaccine-related positions or just other cost-saving measures or open positions that we have currently. So these will be funded through program element oh-nine and ten. To put this in a little bit of a context, as I know we've been here a lot with many requests. These four positions, like I mentioned, are, are primarily vaccine-related positions. So Alex Hinkle, he's a logistics person, manages a lot of our vaccine events. And then we have somebody who is managing the, a lot of the social media and the posts that we see about what vaccine events are when and supporting our team administratively, as well as two vaccine nurse positions to continue giving vaccines and outreach in the community. One of those, Rachel Balboni, she does a lot of the homebound and direct care in the long-term care facilities, going out and vaccinating anybody who needs it in those kind of situations. So I also personally want to thank you guys for helping us create our standalone COVID structure. I can tell you that it's been very helpful to have that security in the last few weeks. And dealing with things like last week with the, the fourth dose or the second booster being approved, our team was ready for that. And we were able to, I don't know if you guys saw our social media post, but, you know, we had lines at the library and we were kind of ready for that shift and to be able to flex up. We are certainly moving our reliance out of those temporary positions and trying to move everything to kind of a new framework in this more formal, long-term structure with these limited duration positions. So I'd like to open it up and see if you guys had any other questions.
How do you spell your new last name?
H O R T O N.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that. We will get our records updated. And you said Rachel was one of the vaccine nurses. Who is the other one?
So that position is currently open. We've had several of these positions be open for quite some time. We're hoping with the way, so if you think about those bigger community clinics that we have, we have to stack a lot of nurses in those positions and have like less hours, but more people working them, if that makes sense. But we're hoping as we kind of move into something that's more targeted with lots of smaller vaccine clinics, outreach to specific groups, that we can, you know, take that same demand and like stretch it out over a forty-hour, one person's forty-hour work week and hopefully be able to recruit some of those people into applying for that position or whoever else, if that makes sense. So extending this six months would also help with the recruitment process clearly, as we're, you know, this position expires at the end of December. So it'll be easier to recruit someone for at least a year-long position at this point.
Okay. Are there any questions?
So we have a COVID infrastructure, we're going to keep that infrastructure. Now we're talking about extending from the end of this calendar year into the end of this next fiscal year. So it'll be next fiscal year's kind of line there.
So some of the positions within our structure are funded through twenty-three and others are ending at the end of this calendar year, at the end of twenty-two.
So one of my thoughts is, you know, the definition of this thing called COVID nineteen and the terminology pandemic and endemic. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, is it newsworthy to think that we're going to be committing to this COVID nineteen emergency struc- and maybe we don't call it emergency structure, just structure for another six months after the end of this calendar year? So, you know, hopefully we're saying goodbye to this and managing it, you know, not, and respecting it for what it is, but not holding on to the, you know, emergency nature of this situation.
So I think that there's probably a couple of different ways to look at that. One is we've committed some of those positions through the fiscal year anyhow. The second is I agree with you as far as linking the word COVID and emergency and how do we handle those two things? We certainly, you know, hope that there's not any more kind of, of those emergency pieces. But I think what I'm doing with my team moving forward is thinking about emergencies in a bigger setting. And how are we dealing with those and being ready for whatever comes our way? Whether it's another ebb and flow in COVID or another variant that we have to make some hard choices about how we're going to handle it. To being able to roll out a, not a booster, but a, a new vaccine for a different variant or any of those kind of things. We're, we're preparing, we're taking the lessons that we've learned from the last two years. Right now, one of the big things that we're doing is doing kind of debriefs and after-action reports to try to collect feedback from both our team and the community to help better understand what we could have done better and what lessons we are going to need to learn for whatever comes next, right? The difficulty with all of this is we just don't know. I can tell you that the last time it felt similar to this as far as in the public was last June and July-ish. And then things got a lot worse before they're getting better. So my hope is of course that we are on some level playing field where we can, you know, all just have a nice, easy kind of endemic, be able to get in some routines and like understand that in the fall, we're going to have vaccine rollout that we need to have bigger clinics for. And at this, you know, those kind of more regular and routine actions that, you know, frankly, that's what public health is more used to. Like in my experience in public health, I'm much more used to those like long end games, goals that are far out. You know, setting up those things with lots of time. And so that's kind of the shift that I hope we can make, but using the lessons that we've learned in case it doesn't happen the way we hope it does, to move into the future.
Speaking of that, I just wanted to thank you because you have been here the entire time. I thank you for your diligence and expertise and your commitment to Deschutes County. We've noticed and it's been really, it's been really appreciated. So, you know, I know it's, it hasn't always, it hasn't always been easy. And, you know, when we had what, forty-five hundred positives in one week? And, you know, even like last week, we were, we were still like fifth most in the state, even though we were down at sixteen or something on a daily. And now I believe the OHA is no longer posting, I'm no longer going to get a daily email, right? Those are gone and you can.
Which are sending out all that information. I mean, I think really shows that we are moving into kind of a new phase. And we acknowledge that, we welcome it, we want that to happen, but we want to be ready to. And I, I mean, from my perspective, you know, I don't want to be caught in a situation where I'm not prepared and re, you know, retraining people. It takes a long time to become comfortable and, you know, understand the systems and who to contact. And those relationships that we build both internally within our teams and externally in the community, they matter. And they're really hard to replace if we lose them. So I think it's really important to the best of our ability to continue, you know, with that structure and the support so that we're there when people have questions or, you know, all of those kind of things. I mean, I think it's really important to, to have that kind of consistency. And moving forward, I hope we can continue, you know, in a way that makes sense. You know, I'm really, like, I am really fiscally responsible in my own life. Like it makes, gives me tons of anxiety to think about the amount of money that's been spent. But I think, you know, we can do it in a smart way and, and doing things like this makes sense to, to, you know, rehiring somebody costs a lot more than keeping someone an extra amount of time.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'd just like to say that we can call this a pandemic, we can call it an endemic, we can call it an emergency, we can call it a non-emergency. But no matter what we call it, COVID is, COVID nineteen still exists in the world. The global conditions that generate new variants are still there. You know, we, we don't have nearly the, the, the level of vaccination globally that is necessary to, to, to be able to expect that we're not going to have regular new variants. And we have no guarantee that those new variants are not going to be both highly transmissible and also very lethal. So we need to be prepared for that. You know, again, whether we call it an emergency or a non-emergency or an endemic or a pandemic, we need to be prepared. And maintaining some foundational, you know, human resources infrastructure to be able to respond is. to be able to respond is, uh, it, to, to me, a very strategic, uh, plan and, and makes good sense. So I, I would, uh, I would support this resolution. And, you know, we can continue to discuss or I'd be happy to make a motion right now.
This is for a future board meeting. It's just, that's why we're discussing.
I do have a question, Emily, because this is a public meeting and there is a $3,650 difference in the two costs for the, the public health nurses. Is the one that we currently have, are they being paid the 58,000? Or are they being paid the 54,000?
I would have to get back to you on-
Well, I mean, I just-
I'm guessing that, um, we would estimate the person that we're going to hire on it, some pay and the person that we already have hired at a different pay because she already has her pay scale. So we know exactly what that's going to be. And there may be a discrepancy between the two.
Okay, I just-
Based on, yeah, what's, what step-
We're very cost-aware of what people are being paid in today's world with inflation at eight, 10%. So, yeah, okay. No, it's, um, I so appreciate you, um, being there. So for the last two years and what is it, two months, something like that?
It was a simple world of inspections, wasn't it?
Yes.
Simple.
I know. We went on a few inspections long, long ago. It feels like a different lifetime.
I know. What a lifetime ago, right?
So these funds are here from FEMA and OHA for COVID. That's why we're receiving these funds.
Correct. So the two, the two funding streams for these are actually through OHA. Um, we've been able to extend them by leveraging FEMA to pay for some of those positions, which we thought FEMA was going to expire. So we would have been paying these people's salary with these program element funds, but we have shifted to be able to backfill and pay a lot of those, you know, positions with FEMA funding. And that's allowing us to extend these, um, or have more funding in our budget to extend those using the OHA funds to keep going.
But isn't FEMA funding for vaccinations ending like the end of June or something?
Correct. So this is what, so we have this pot of money that's the OHA funds. And we thought we were going to spend it because we thought that the FEMA funding was going to end at the end of, um, the year, last year.
Right.
But it's extended through June. So that's allowed us to save all of that money that we would have spent from OHA on these positions and utilize it to extend them into the next year.
Great.
Okay.
So, um, a resolution will be coming back then. Do we need a motion today, anything?
Make one if you like.
Sure.
Or, I mean, would this appear on consent agenda or?
Yeah, it would come as a consent item. There's no need for a motion.
Okay, no need for a motion then.
Your opportunity to approve it then.
Okay.
You've indicated, it sounds like you're going to approve it, so.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Back to inspections, right?
Oh, yeah. Some days I miss it, I'll tell you, but.
I know.
Thanks, Emily.
So nice to see you in person. Thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon. How's it going, commissioners?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. For the record, Tarek Rawlings. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Um, and before you today is just an update into the dark skies revisitation, uh, process that was initiated back in November, um, when we first came to the board asking about it as a work plan item. Um, revisiting of this ordinance, it's an existing 94 ordinance, has been on the county's work plan for the last two years. Um, and so we, uh, went to the board in November of 2021 asking, um, if we could proceed with revisiting this ordinance through a process primarily starting with the planning commission's review of that ordinance. Those, uh, series of planning commission meetings took place, uh, in January and went into February. They culminated in February, uh, during February with a panel discussion that was, um, about a seven-person panel comprised mostly of dark skies advocates at that time. So there was a really, uh, vibrant presentation, a pretty long one, that gave us a lot of good information of, from many different angles, basically in support of, of, uh, dark sky best practices by, um, kind of current day standards and recommendations for how to incorporate some of those best practices into the existing ordinance. That, uh, discussion culminated with the planning commission in February, uh, conveying kind of two articles of support to the, the Board of County Commissioners today. So that conveyance is twofold. One is that they conveyed support, uh, for an update of the ordinance generally to reflect best practices was largely the focus of those conversations. And then the second conveyance of support is for an educational campaign focused on dark skies best practices. Um, and so that's what's before you today is, um, that conveyance of support from the planning commission as well as, um, kind of some background information in your memo related to some of the jurisdictions that we've reviewed in terms of their ordinance and sort of what the, the, uh, design requirements might be, some of the different aspects of those programs. Overall, we're asking the board for direction today in terms of where, uh, you'd like to see this revisitation go, um, where you'd like to see ultimately this program go in terms of, um, uh, how to, how to couch maybe that conveyance of support from the planning commission into some next steps. Um, one idea, kind of in light of staffing shortages, different sort of, uh, uh, processes that are already undergoing, one recommendation from staff, um, just for the consideration of the board would be to include this discussion and kind of future revisitations and discussions of the dark sky ordinance, uh, changes to the dark sky ordinance in the forthcoming county's comprehensive plan update. There's a lot of benefits to including it in that process. One being kind of an expanded panel discussion, so to speak, with more community input related to just different thoughts. You, they're usually fairly supportive, but maybe just differing perspectives around dark skies best practices. Um, that's one thought in terms of the staff's recommendation in the memo to include that as a part of the comprehensive plan update process. Uh, but we would be, of course, um, amenable to any kind of, uh, different direction or other program, um, requirements that the board had in mind. So, um, with that in mind, I'm here for any questions you might have.
Well, I'm excited about, uh, looking for those opportunities where, you know, it's just some simple shading, some downward lighting could really change an environment. Uh, so it's a great discussion to have. I did used to work in an observatory in, uh, in Hawaii and I know what dark skies are. In fact, I was talking about, uh, the stars that you can see, see at night with your eyes are too bright for the telescopes that we're using. You know, we would calibrate unknown stars out in the atmosphere and the ones you could see with your eyes were way too bright for the, for, for the sensors. Uh, so that's what a dark sky is. I mean, it's very, very sensitive. Uh, we do have some observatory activities. We do live in the high desert here. So I'm just showing my support for the whole thing. Thanks to planning commission and the people that have provided input on this topic also. Uh, I do not, you know, support that code enforcement spin-up situation at all, though, at this time. Let's just do community education, uh, appreciation for dark skies. Uh, you know, as I say, downward lighting and shading, uh, a brochure or a simple website that explains what, you know, what's a bad situation? What's a good situation? What do they look like? Uh, you know, sometimes parking lot lights have been these big bright lights way overhead or it could be just that kind of hip-high little bollard in the parking lot, which makes the walkway, uh, uh, illuminated. So there's all kinds of stuff we could go and talk about on this. Uh, as I say, I'm, uh, excited that, uh, we have examples. What was it? Sun River that has reduced their total light output at night over time? So that's, when you focus on it, you can really have some, uh, changes in that area.
I would also say that, um, I'm much more interested in the educational approach than the enforcement approach. Um, it's not that I don't think, uh, if we have ordinances and we should update our ordinance, um, if we have ordinances, we, you know, people should be asked to comply with them. But, um, I, in a, in a situation like this where we're talking about the activity of thousands of people just in a really dispersed way across the landscape, I think we can, uh, accomplish a lot with education and, and goodwill and, uh, explaining to people, you know, how, how precious the dark skies we have in central Oregon are and, uh, recruiting them and listing them to help, uh, preserve that special resource that's just part of our quality of life here. Rather than, uh, sending code compliance out to, to wag their finger at them. So I would, I, you know, I would be very much in support of, um, like, really, you know, ambitious and proactive educational efforts. You know, the, it's quite possible that, uh, these kinds of efforts could benefit from, you know, investments from, from the county. Uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, you, uh, when you have, when you have an educational need, it's not, not like you can just throw money at it. You, you, you need to have a whole lot of people who care a lot and who, uh, will engage and will help carry the message. But, um, when you have those people, it, it, you know, it sure helps if they've got a little bit of, a, a little bit of resources to work with to help them get their, their message out. So, um, that's, uh, where I'd like to see a lot of the emphasis with this effort. Absolutely, we should, um, uh, we should review our ordinances, you know, address best practices. If there's things that we know about blue light now that we didn't know 15 or 20 years ago, then we should, you know, we should incorporate those things into our, into our regulatory framework. Uh, but, uh, I, I, I also think that that can, I'm comfortable waiting for that until the, the comp plan update process comes around.
Well, Tarek, it is amazing that we're looking at something from 1994, that the counties seem to be, you know, ahead and, uh, which is really great. And it sounds like both commissioners were talking about, um, educational campaign. And I'm always into billboards. Maybe we could have a billboard, you know, educational campaign. But, um, you know, just something to remind people that it's, it is really important to have the light go down.
Certainly. We could light the billboard up real bright at night.
I'm like, how about a dark billboard?
As long as we model the kinds of-
Yeah, let's have a black billboard and you can only read it during the day or something, you know? I don't know. Anyway.
Uh, so, but when the update is discussed, I mean, uh, technology has changed. So that's the other thing here. A hundred watt incandescent light bulb in 1995 is very different than a, you know, 14-watt compact fluorescent or LED now. So the, the technology truly has changed drastically since we had put that in place. So that's an area we can definitely focus on. You know, what does it really mean to have lumens or brightness or, or color spectral effects, you know? And let's not get super technical on it. I'm envisioning instead of that really bright bulb on your front porch with no, uh, uh, shade on it, you know, have a simple downward shade, uh, even if there is brightness coming out.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it can be, it can be really simple about bulbs and downward shielding. I mean, it's, it's a lot of it right there.
Well, it is amazing. It was 28 years ago. So, and how many deer are in the backyard eating my bulbs? That's what, usually what I see with the, you know, with the lights that come around our house. So, yeah, it's always, um, it's always a challenge. But I really do appreciate you bringing this to us and meeting with us individually. And, um, you know, do you feel like you have enough direction from what we've said today or?
Sure. Uh, and, and just to clarify, it might be good to, I, I don't know if Dave can weigh in.
Do you have a motion?
A motion to be made might be a little helpful.
Okay.
Uh, next steps and direction for-
Yeah, there's a recommended motion on the cover sheet and I think that would be appropriate to direct it for the comp plan.
So I'll, I'll move approval to review Deschutes Count, Deschutes County's dark skies ordinance as a topic for discussion during the county comprehensive plan update process.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I get, I, I, this, this motion doesn't capture the, the educational campaign. And so I, I, you know, I, I don't know what the, the process is for us to, to move forward and, and, and interest in that.
Certainly propose a second motion, just encouraging staff to develop an educational program associated with this. That might come out of the comp plan work anyway, but.
It might, but I think it's a good idea to have that in the motion or to at least provide that clear direction to staff now. Um, and, and part of it is, and this is talking with Peter, and Peter, you can share this as well, is that staff will continue to enforce the lighting ordinance as they receive complaints. But I do know they also receive a lot of questions from interested people in the community that say, please come out at nine o'clock at tonight so you can just see just how bright it is. Well, this is clearly stating that that's not the direction. The direction is if they receive a complaint, they'll process the complaint. Absent a complaint, they're not just going to send staff out at nine o'clock at night to see how bright something may or may not be. Those will, will require complaints in order to process. Is that, is that fair?
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. I think Nick's, Nick's summary was, was excellent. I think the other thing that we can offer in terms of education is we can create up some pamphlets, make it available in our lobby. Let our dark skies advocates who are very active and passionate, and I don't know if last weekend you knew that there was an opportunity to see the Northern Lights. Um, there's a picture that was forwarded to me about the Northern Lights being caught above Smith Rock on, on Saturday evening. So, uh, you know, people really associate dark skies with quality of life here. So we can, with the time available to our staff, develop some educational materials, uh, disseminate those, uh, you know, as frequently as possible. And then through the comprehensive plan update, which is Tarek mentioned, we can use that, uh, forum to ensure that dark skies is discussed and that's part of the education about why it's so important. And then to the extent that there's goals and policies that really elevate the importance of revising our, our lighting ordinance to recognize some of the new technology that Commissioner DeBonne highlighted, we, we can do that. But, um, uh, we, I, I can say, you know, personally, I really appreciate the consideration of the recommendation to, to elevate this through education and through the comprehensive plan update. I think it will make a difference. And, uh, through that process, we can determine what the next steps are. But not, you know, getting any short shrift for the importance of ensuring that our customers and the general public understand that there's information that we can make available that underscore, underscore the importance of dark skies.
And I, I guess, um, I, I, I have possibly like, it might be, it might be similar or it might be a, a different vision for how this educational campaign can, can work. So, uh, a, a long time ago, I was very involved in, um, in efforts to, uh, reduce non-point source water pollution, which I think is a very similar kind of a policy problem to this. You know, basically we're, we're looking at the everyday decisions of people in their household and how that affects like a broader resource and the quality of that resource. And, um, you know, a big part of, of what helped to advance the non-point source pollution prevention agenda was the, the establishment and growth of these, uh, community-based organizations called watershed councils. Um, and so it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't local governments. It wasn't state government. It wasn't, you know, county governments who were solving the problem and leading the educational efforts. It was the people in these communities who really cared about water quality and, you know, the clean creeks and lakes and things like that. And, and those people had the motivation, you know, the, the passion to really do a great job of, of educating the community about the simple things that they could do to, uh, preserve water quality. They just needed a little bit of support, um, from the public sector to be able to do that work. So I, you know, if, if one of the decisions we're making right now is that, okay, we're, we are deferring a, a review of our ordinance until the time when we're, you know, we're, we're, you know, engaged in the comp plan update. The, the educational efforts that we're talking about, you know, kind of recruiting the community into these educational efforts and providing them a little bit of support, that's something that could start right now. Um, and so that's, I guess that's why I'm, you know, why I, I, I wouldn't want us to just wait until we're working on the ordinance revision to start thinking about the educational campaign because, um, we could, we can make a whole lot of progress right now. I want to be very sensitive to, um, the impacts on staff with that. But that's a, another part of the reason why I'm kind of laying out this scenario where we, you know, we recruit these, you know, they, these people who've been engaged with us now for over a year in, in, uh, you know, encouraging us to look at the ordinance and to recruit them and engage them and, and being the leaders, uh, in these educational efforts.
So, uh, if I may, Madam Chair and Commission, just as, just to offer a response and some perspectives. I do know that the Oregon, there's an Oregon chapter of the Dark Skies Association. They're speaking tonight at McMenamin's to, to promote and educate the importance of dark skies. I am, my, and your non-point source pollution is, is well-taken. I mean, of course, cities have to implement non-point source pollution through stormwater master plans and national pollution, national pollution discharge elimination permits. So for local governments, those that do have non-point source pollution, there is a regulatory cost. There is staffing and testing and a regulatory mechanism for those cities that at once were 50,000 and now they're- 50,000 and now they're over 100,000. So there, for local government, for non-point source pollution as an analogy, there are responsibilities when you have stormwater facilities. What we were trying to delicately address in the memorandum is, is our staffing resources are very limited.
Right.
And if the board is interested in having us, I mean, I think there's things that we can do relatively efficiently with pamphlets and engaging the dark skies advocates to let them know that the board values the, the work that they do, that, you know, we stamp every plan that comes in for building permits, you know, that they have to comply, among other things, our lighting ordinance. We can, with time permitting, create, I think, potentially a website that talks about dark skies. Anything above that, if you're looking for active engagement, creating partnerships, fostering this coalition, I would want to come back and discuss what the opportunity costs of, of doing that. There's just not a lot of bandwidth in our long-range planning section to embrace a rigorous level of support to promote dark skies in the way that you were articulating with non-point source pollution. So there's a bit of a tipping point where all of a sudden, I just want to make sure I, we have a clear understanding of what your expectations are. And if you, and if they're, if they're extensive, then we would respectfully like to come back and tell you what that means to our program. So.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is not an elegant way of saying this, but essentially I'm proposing we outsource the educational campaign. And, you know, I, you know, I haven't been engaged with these, these dark skies advocates the way that you all have, but, I mean, it sounds like they're pretty, they're, they're pretty thoughtful people who know how to do some homework. And I, you know, if, if, if there was an opportunity to just say, hey, send us a proposal with a dollar amount and we can look at that. And, you know, from my perspective, that literally, you know, talking about the staff constraints that we have, it is literally an opportunity to take something that could be a workload liability for the community development department and convert, you know, and outsource it to a community partner that, that could do that work hopefully well and, you know, hopefully to our standards in a, in a way that, that can accomplish a lot of, a lot of good for the community.
And Commissioner Chang, just really quickly, I think there is a, there's an example I'd heard of in city of Troutdale, just during the research of this, and there was almost exactly what you're describing. There was kind of an advocacy group that was eventually partnered into this, into a lighting district essentially, that did a lot of exactly what you're describing, kind of educational outreach. So if I'm, I'm just trying to clarify for myself that your, maybe a benefit to the second motion is not tying educational campaigns to the comp plan process, something we could get done sooner rather than later? And then a second.
Initiate sooner.
Sure. And then maybe a second benefit is this kind of workload capacity that, that when we say pamphlets and website, things like that, your, your intent is maybe to ask these advocates what their capacity is to do those things on their own first? Is that correct?
What, what their, what their capacity is to do those things and, and let them know that we're, we're willing to, to, you know, I won't speak for the other commissioners until we discuss this, but, you know, it, for me, it would just be smart to be willing to put some money on the table so that we don't have, in this incredibly staff constrained environment that we're working in, so that we don't have to do the work.
The other thing that I, as, as the board contemplates this, this opportunity, the other thing that's, that was, that I observed, so this is just my lens of the extraordinary presentations that were made at the panel. And there's a link in your packet, I think it's footnote number two, if you select that, you go right to the, the meeting and the, in the, in the video, and you can see some of those PowerPoint presentations. But it's in, not at all diminishing that there's light pollution in rural Deschutes County. There clearly is. But the light bulge are predominantly generated, the light dome is the term, are generated from our two largest cities. The cities of Bend and the cities of Redmond. And so I think the dark skies advocates are passionate and they see this opportunity where Deschutes County is the first local government in our region that is discussing it and is willing, and our work program has, has afforded a, a forum for this information to be made available to the community. But as you look out over time, and again, I'm not trying to diminish that there's not things that can be done in the rural county, over the next 20 years, there's going to be 100,000 more people in our region. Most of them are going to be in the cities. When you look at another, you know, at 50 years, you know, 200,000 people are in our region, most of them are going to be in our cities. And when you look at rural county population projections, rural county population flattens. And it's not to say that there's not going to be lighting and there's not going to be development out there, but I think it's, it was, I think it's important to acknowledge where the, our biggest light emitters are coming from. And, and so as you, as, as the board contemplates weighing an education outreach campaign, where, again, where most of the, the lighting is getting emitted and, you know, is impacting dark skies. So it's, it's just something to, to put on the record.
And so these, these groups haven't made any contact with, with our municipal governments?
Not to the extent that they have with ours, because I think we have, we have this vibrant work program that affords our residents, our constituents to engage on topics that they find very meaningful. And as, as Tarek noted, for the last two years, it's been identified and, and they mobilized and we had the capacity starting last fall to, to convene a panel. And so to their credit, they have, they have mobilized. I mean, as I look at our chairader from Siskers Country, Sister School District's engaged and they have teachers. And one of the recent graduates from Sisters High School is now, I think, operating the observatory at Worthy Brewery. I mean, it's, there's really a phenomenal sense of community and identity. And they've used this platform, I think, as the first kind of crack in the door to, to elevate why dark skies is so important. And again, it correlated with the most, you know, relatively recently, as Commissioner DeBonne noted, the, the dark skies award to Sun River and as well as Primeville Reservoir as these internationally recognized dark skies, you know, places. So as, as far as I know, they have not directly engaged the cities of Bend and Redmond. I do believe there's been some inroads in, at Sister City Hall because of the, the presence that the school district has there and how important it is they want to maintain the dark skies specifically in that region. So it's just another, long-winded. It's, it's a balancing act that I, I'm acknowledging as, as this issue has come up through our work plan, which again is focusing on, on lands within our jurisdiction.
So if I could just offer a couple of quick comments, I'm hearing support to revisit the ordinance and the program during the comp plan update.
Right.
Pursue the educational campaign until that happens. And I think one thing that you can do is Laura is here in the back, Scundrick, she can inform you of any and all grant opportunities that, for example, the dark skies chapter could apply for. The timing is perfect. They shouldn't delay with the budget season here and grant season here. And I don't know if there's an opportunity or not, but connect with, with Laura about what some of those funds might look like, because we do know they do great work already. A lot of us already get their calendar, their dark skies calendar, and they're doing a lot of good work. Process code complaints as usual. It's just, we're just not treating them differently. And I know that what some of the people are asking you to do is proactive code enforcement, which is that additional step that we don't do for, for most others. And I think just the final piece is, in the rural area, we do experience more light pollution in Deschutes County because we don't have the trees that you have in Western Oregon or in other places. So it's just more visible.
Or cloudy skies too, you know, when it's really dark and the fog is like on the ground.
Exactly.
Yeah. I've lived in those places and it's, yeah.
So that's just kind of a summary of what I've heard and my thoughts with maybe connecting with some, some resources.
I mean, it looks like Sisters actually, they, you list their educational materials that they have, and I'm looking at like Redmond, Washington, their population is 73,000, they've got their regulations, you know, maybe there's, maybe they have some documents that they give out and maybe we can just kind of compare some of the community. But, you know, definitely there's, Black Diamond, Washington is only 4,500 people. So, you know, that's 4,500. Troutdale is 16,000, you know, by Portland, you know, maybe somebody has a moment in time that can just collect the information and see what seems to be the most helpful. But we truly were ahead of the game in 28 years ago, so that's good to know.
We're still in the middle of a motion.
Yep. Okay. Are we going to amend that with a friendly emotion from your emotion?
I don't, I, I think, I want to continue the discussion about an educational campaign, how we empower these advocates and how we engage the, the cities in that. But I, I don't think that there's a motion necessarily on that right now. But do we want to just vote on our, on our, on our first motion and then?
Right.
And go to the, the educational discussion a little bit more?
Okay. Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair, yes. That's the original motion, which is listed in our packet.
And then, you know, seeing Laura with us here, I, and, and with the, with the prompting from Nick to think about grant opportunities, I actually, this might, you know, this strikes me as an interesting special projects grant. You know, now that we have this new category for our kind of initiatives that are, you know, are, you know, coming on our radar screen that might need, you know, like a decent shot of resources to, to really get, you know, to jump to the new level or, you know, sustain activities at certain levels. You know, given the, the kind of background that Peter just shared, this is certainly something that I, I think that the cities should share in supporting if it's, you know, if there's going to be, you know, public, you know, subsidy, public investment in this, in this kind of effort. But to get started, it might take some seed resources. And since the, since these folks, you know, came to the county first and use this as a platform to, to elevate this issue, I, I think it'd be appropriate for us to provide some seed resources to, to help them, you know, initiate a really, you know, you know, substantial, exciting, community education campaign. So that's not a motion, that's just.
I was going to say.
That's just a kind of.
Yes.
A thought, thought, thought process, thought stream, but of where this might go next.
So do you want to make it into a motion?
I, so, I mean, like we, you know, we don't, we don't even know if they, we don't even know if they want to, if they want a, a.
There's a.
A special project grant. So, I mean, you know, I, I'm happy to go and meet with some people and explore this idea.
I mean, those were the two recommendations from the planning commission. First, to update it, which we are going to do at the point in time with our plan, comprehensive plan, and then explore an educational campaign. That was number two, so.
Sure. I think if there, if there is a motion to be made, we can certainly come back at a later date and maybe give some ideas around educational ideas, something like that, that sounds like a helpful idea to the board. But that's very helpful next direction just for the comprehensive plan update portion. So I appreciate you giving clarity on that one.
And I would add Bill Kowalik is, is.
Right.
You know, I, Commissioner Chang, just since this, I don't think there's a motion, I, we can reach out, Tarek can reach out to, to Bill Kowalik and, and I think it might be worthwhile allowing him to engage you just on his thoughts, his passion. I mean, he could engage all, I'm not singling other commissioners out of that conversation, but it might be helpful to listen to his perspective and, and we can, Tarek can certainly alert Bill to, to potential grant opportunities to the extent that they're eligible and it's available. But I, I know that he would value sharing his experiences and this passion that he has. And certainly if other commissioners are, you know, interested in Bill's response, we can extend that as well.
Yeah. I mean, there's a number of ways this could go. I mean, Commissioner DeBonne, if this is, you know, this is something that you have, you know, a specific background in, you know, like in, in this issue, I mean, if you, if you wanted to, if you wanted to explore the possibility of supporting an educational campaign, I'd be happy to, to step back on that as well. Or we could have, we can have Bill Kowalik come and do a presentation for the whole board and we, we just really drill down on the, you know, with the educational campaign piece of this.
So I'd be hesitant to, you know, empower the advocates of dark skies to be funded by the county, to point out to everybody how we need to change our ways to have dark skies. Educational, yes. But my point is there's a discussion about existing property owners, future property development opportunities and commercial property. So I just, I see it as a little bit bigger spectrum instead of, you know, handing the advocates money to go get all excited to tell us to turn our lights off at night. You know, I, I mean, not to be rude here, but I, there's a, that's what a planning commission is, is all the perspectives, you know, for us to, to give one, one group of people, the advocates, to, to go do the education. I want the positive buzz, but not the, not the mindset of, of, you know.
Well, we're.
And I don't know what the terms are.
The planning commission is not going to be nearly as effective at getting this message out in the community as the dark skies advocates. So I, I mean, I, I'm looking for, I'm looking for where the capacity is to do educational work. And I don't think it's in our CDD department. And I also don't think it's in our planning commission. I mean, you know, we got, we have, we got, we have a recommendation from the planning commission to, to explore an educational campaign. And so.
Well, I guess, so a brochure says, you know, be careful of your light emissions at night on your property, please downward facing, you know, shades on existing lights and think about it when you put new, new fixtures in. We spend, you know, five or $10,000 and put that out in the media or we put it on Facebook.
The, I mean.
I'm just saying, there's other ways to do it.
I'm not saying that, I wouldn't say that educational brochures aren't useful and important, but, you know, to circle back to the non-point source pollution world and the discussion that we, we started with Peter. I, I've worked on, you know, in that particular realm, in the non-point source pollution realm, I've worked in the public sector side. I've worked in the, in the community advocate, you know, nonprofit side. And I can assure you that the work that community advocates do reaches vastly more people with vastly more impact than the brochure that the municipal government puts out. I mean, it's, you know, no, like the, the brochure is the thing that you leave people with at the end of a presentation. But the presentation is what has the impact. And, you know, in today's day, in the, you know, the day and age today, you know, like, yeah, social media is, is, is one of the ways to get, get information out. And it's just not going to, it's not going to have the reach and it's not going to have the impact that it, that it would have if it comes from county government.
Okay. But then again, reading legal authority in our memo, it says, Deschutes County does not have the legal authority to require all existing exterior lighting in Deschutes County to come into compliance by a certain date. It does have the authority to require outdoor lighting compliance for all new and replacement lighting. So, and then it's, legal counsel continues to reiterate the heightened risk of applying retroactive review to existing fixtures as both a constitutional legal principle and a codified rule within the state statute. So there's, it's a balance.
Well, no, no, it's, it's, we're talking about completely different things. We're talking about the regulatory, the regulatory approach and the enforcement approach and the voluntary educational approach. And it is absolutely true that, you know, across the United States, there is technically legal authority to, to get people to stop creating non-point source pollution. But there is essentially zero capacity to enforce that. And what actually gets people to stop pouring their oil in the street or applying too many fertilizers to their yard is. fertilizers to their yard, is appealing to their goodwill and to the care that they have for their creeks and rivers and lakes in their community. And this is a very similar thing. I, I, there's gonna, there's a lot of goodwill in this community for the, for what makes Deschutes County a special place. Dark skies are part of that. And people, you know, if you reach people with the information, there's gonna be a lot of people who are willing to like, I'm gonna go run to Home Depot and like buy some, you know, downward facing shields to put on my lights, whether I'm doing a new construction project or a renovation or not. Right? And so, I mean, to, to speak to the, to the, what, what you were just reading out, Commissioner Dare, there is nothing that, that, there's nothing that compels somebody to go to Home Depot and buy that downward facing shield for their existing home. But, you know, if, you know, if we tell people, if we explain to people that that simple action that they can take, that, you know, I don't know how much it costs them, thirty bucks, helps to preserve our dark skies that make this, you know, their home a really special place, there's gonna be a lot of people who'd be willing to do that on a completely voluntary basis. They just need the education.
So, yeah, I guess I was just pointing out that I'd be hesitant to select an advocacy organization just at a board meeting and say, you guys go do this. A marketing campaign, if there was money to be put out at RFP for, for putting a positive spin on this, which is exactly what you're referring to, a lot of common ground on the vision here. So, that's, that was my starting point. It's, you know, I'd be hesitant to just pick, you know, an advocacy organization to go do this at a board meeting. So, I mean, and I'm not against them either. I was just thinking of the business of this.
Okay. So, what's the process for exploring whether this particular organization is actually suited to be able to both do, you know, voluntary education and, you know, ordinance advocacy, both? Because there are a whole lot of, you know, that's, not to, not to dig even deeper into the non, the non-point source pollution year world, but watershed councils, their job is to go out and help people do, do voluntary conservation. They have no regulatory sticks. They are not enforcement organizations. That, you know, that, that, that's the whole structure of, I mean, you know, in, in the state of Oregon, watershed councils are this, you know, statutorily created thing. And that is, you know, that is explicitly stated, that they do not force people to do things, that it's all about, you know, voluntary, voluntary stewardship measures. So, there are, there are, you know, and, you know, even if the organizations that exist are, you know, maybe they're not suited to do educational, you know, voluntary educational work, I can guarantee you that there'll be people who are connected with that organization who, you know, if you say, oh, we need, we need a, an education oriented initiative in our community, they'd be willing to like walk, you know, crosswalk over to that. So, what is, I guess, what I'm asking is, what do you think the appropriate process or procedure is to find those people?
Well, I'm just looking at the chart. The next page has Malibu and Ketchum. And they both have educational campaign and material to give out to their residents. So, why not take a look and see what kind of information they're giving out? If we, if, they're probably really good at convincing people this is what, you know, we should be doing. So, it'd be nice to see what their material is. Have we ever looked at that?
Yeah. We, I mean, what I-
That's what it's from.
Yeah, exactly. I think we could emphasize looking specifically at sort of things like the pamphlets and educational printed materials, and different campaign sort of media kits, things like that might be the emphasis of maybe a, a future second update potentially to the board, just around the educational campaign piece we're talking about right now. If that sounds like that would be helpful at a later date.
Yeah. It sounds like it's something we don't have to reinvent. If, if several of these cities have already done it, why don't we take a look at those and see? I mean, I know you guys are overworked and you're short staff right now. And, you know, but it's, why should we recreate it?
Absolutely. No, absolutely. We, we should, we should benefit from the work that's been done by all sorts of other people in all sorts of other places. But somebody still has to do it here. That, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, is who is, you know, who are we going to, who are we going to ask to step up to do that work of tailoring these, these materials, and then, and then promoting the heck out of them in our community? Because it's, it takes a lot of work. And I, I don't think that that's appropriate for our CDD staff to do.
We should bring this to our joint meetings for the cities in the next round.
Right. Who can do that?
For the next, every, every city we talk to, just bring this topic up. I think, you know, because that's it, Ben and Redmond.
We're, yeah, well, and we're meeting with Lapine next week, right? So, I'm sure they'll want one more thing to worry about. No.
Yeah. So, just for my clarification, would that be kind of next steps then of the board, just intend to bring that up with sort of the, the local jurisdiction, see maybe what their educational kit is full of and-
Just asking them, let them know that, you know, we're having vibrant discussions about it. There's advocates, you know, the, what's the, you know, the light dome over the big cities that we're talking about here. Deschutes County is a leader in this. We've done it for many years. It is time to talk about, you know, the new technologies and light spectrums, a little different than incandescence was thirty years ago, or whatever, twenty-five years ago. So, really, yeah, just keeping, keeping it a little bit more front of mind.
Okay. So, we can, we can do that. And I guess I would be happy to, to connect with Mr. Kowalik and, and have a more in-depth discussion.
Sounds good. I'll, I'll be sure to forward you that contact information. And I think if that's everything, I really appreciate your time today, Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tara.
Appreciate your time even more. Thanks. Thank you, Peter. Okay. We're at item number four.
We're not on time. Well, maybe not.
Not truly on time. Yeah, we were on time, sort of. Now, we're not. Okay. This one is going to be really fast, isn't it?
Or maybe not.
We'll be optimistic.
So, I've, I'm just proposing a motion for us to continue our banking relationship with First Interstate Bank. We went out for a proposal in January. We have a committee that included Joe Brundage from the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Penner from CDD, Christina Partain in Solid Waste, and then me, Greg Munn, and then Casey Harden in Finance, oh, and also Judy Hoss in Finance. So, a pretty big committee that's all worked pretty detailed within banking over the last ten years. We've been with First Interstate Bank. Well, technically, we were with Bank of Cascades, and then they were bought out. And so, eight years with First Interstate Bank. We had five proposers. They all were pretty similar. Nothing stood out, though, to make us warrant switching from First Interstate Bank. We've had a really good working relationship with them for a long time. I honestly think we're kind of spoiled, from my standpoint. Do y'all have any questions on?
So, this started with a request for proposal for banking services.
Yes.
And was that a, so you said we're finishing up eight years, and it's kind of a five-year window that we're trying to do?
Yes. So, yeah, we signed a five-year contract, two one-year renewals, and then we had a one-year emergency renewal for COVID.
Oh, yeah. Okay. There you go. That's, that's the rest of the story right there. Okay.
Yep. No, and it sounded like five other banks, or five banks in total where proposals went to. So, that's good. And we're, we're still going, hopefully be spoiled by First Interstate.
Yes, I hope so.
If we have a motion. Any questions, bless you?
No question. So, there's like an expected minimum balance and some interest rate agreements and relative to L, local government investment pool also, right?
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's all been riding down ever, for the last couple of years, though, interest rates, obviously.
Yeah. The interest rate bottomed out, I think. And we're gonna start to see it rise a little bit again. It's been really low.
Mm-hmm.
And it has still been covering our fees, though, for banking services. So, that's good.
Great. So, this is a notice of intent to award contract. With that, I'll move board signature of document 2022 to S. 345, a notice of intent to award contract for banking services to First Interstate Bank.
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you, Jana.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five. It looks like it's Nick and Whitney, maybe?
I can cover it.
Okay. There she is.
Thank you, Commissioners. Administration is Nick Lelek, for the record here, for this agenda item, joined by Deputy County Administrator Whitney Hale. We're here to request approval to add a new position to Administrative Services for a Management Analyst position. Specifically, the title of the position would be Strategic Initiatives Manager, which is an increasingly common title we're seeing in, in local governments, to really carry out elective officials' priority projects. We've listed several of those here, and the most recent of which that has been identified as a priority for the board is the Commercial Property Assessment, Assessed Clean Energy, CPACE, project. But there are several others. Coordination with the Joint Office on Homelessness, the Camping Feasibility Study, staffing the Cannabis Advisory Panel. We have funding coming from the state, from the Department of Administrative Services for drought funding and to address community water needs, helping staff the Economic Development Loan Program, coordination with some of the Newbury Neighborhood Planning efforts, which are very significant, room tax coordination among finance, community development with short-term rentals and others, helping staff, if approved by the board, the Wolf Depredation Compensation Committee. And, and this, the person could, other board priorities that are raised, such as what we just discussed, with the dark skies, lighting ordinance or lighting outreach, public outreach, those types of efforts, this person could also help coordinate among, among various county departments. So, as, as the priorities continue to increase for our growing county, so do the, the work demands and workloads. And this would provide really significant capacity for us to, to meet those increasing needs and demands. We've outlined the financial impact in the staff report. Just in full disclosure, the salary, which shows a hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, is the top of the range. Whether or not that's the salary, we don't know. But we, we didn't want to underestimate it in the event that, for example, if it's somebody that's internal, it's the top of the range. We attract somebody from the, from the outside, it's the top of the range, whatever it is, just to have the maximum flexibility. This is a new position, so it would be a full, open recruitment to internal, external, all candidates in full transparency. So, with that, I'll just turn it over to, to see if Whitney has any additional comments about the position. Otherwise, we've coordinated on this together, along with Eric Crop and, and administrative team. So, with that, I turn it over to the board for questions.
One question. What, what does the org chart look like, then? Who works for who?
Yeah. This position would, would report to me.
Okay.
And provide significant support for, certainly for Administrative Services, including, including the board. But they, it would report to the county administrator.
So, my question was, the benefits are forty-nine percent. I just wondered, I thought benefits were normally thirty percent is how you calculated it?
I'll defer to Whitney on that. I know she coordinated with Human Resources on what those, what those benefits may be. But they're certainly not any, any greater than they would, than they are for other employees. But it does seem like a-
I'm guessing it depends on the salary of the position. For a really, you know, a higher level manager is making a hundred fifty thousand. The amount of money that it takes to give them benefits is gonna be a smaller proportion, maybe closer to thirty than for a hundred thousand dollar position.
I just double-checked, and what's in the staff report's consistent with what we got from our team in Finance. But I'm happy to follow up on that, Commissioner Dare, and just ask the question. But we work with Finance to cost positions, and that's the information we were provided for this one.
Okay.
I'm happy to dig into that a little bit and try to get into why it is-
Okay. I just, I was just kind of curious-
Yep.
Why it seemed so high. I mean, the salary, the one oh three, is that the max that we're paying for this position? Or is, isn't that what you just said?
That would be the top of the range.
That's the top of the range.
Yeah. And we're not, we're not going to assume that. It's just to provide the flexibility.
Okay.
Well, so, you know, to bring another person in the front office, obviously, we could keep this person busy. And I'm just thinking of the, you know, the administration. So, this would be general fund, kind of the, the cost to the, the people of Deschutes County. I think it'd be a great investment, so I'm very supportive of it. We want to be sensitive to the, you know, the rest of the organization, too, you know, getting that recruiting going, keeping the culture going, being able to respond to anybody's questions and needs. It's a very dynamic time. So, we're responding by being able to offer this for the front office. And it's great you have the whole bullet list of items. A lot of these things, we were not doing, we're, we're still not doing some of them. Obviously, the Joint Office of Homelessness, all the different parts and pieces. It's just amazing. So, do you think funding, now that I pulled that bullet point out, the Office of Homelessness, homeless, part of the funding from the state? Or would that be this person overseeing that office, another person?
It's really, yeah, the, the person, the Executive Director for the Joint Office, or the Collaborative Office, whatever we're gonna ultimately call it, per the, the very draft preliminary org chart, would also report to me. But we will determine if that's the right structure, whether it's myself or one of our two deputy county administrators. I'm not sure that, that, that that would partially fund it. We, we could certainly talk about that. The City of Bend has a, a similar position that's also leading their coordination efforts. So, it's a discussion that we should have with the city on, on how we allocate that funding. We've estimated that up to fifty percent could be, of the, of the salary could be paid for by CPACE, depending on the applications that we've heard that, that could come in. And so, yeah, there, there are a couple of different avenues to, to, to further think about funding the position in addition to general fund support.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is a really long list of things. And I, I can't imagine someone being meaningfully engaged in this whole list, plus, you know, plus whatever, you know, interesting idea we come up with at the board meeting next week, right? So, am I thinking about that correctly? Like, this, this person would be assigned some subset of these, of these topics, of, of these issues? And, and, you know, like-
As many as possible to start with.
Yeah. What, yeah, the way I-
Seven percent for the Cannabis Advisory Panel. And, you know, that kind of, you would build, you would build what would be a reasonable scope of work for them. And, and then we would continue to try to absorb additional things throughout admin as, as needed.
That's exactly right. Some of these projects, the person would, would, would manage. Others, it would just be truly a coordination between, for example, Admin, Finance, and CDD, if that's, if that's one project. Or between Admin, the City of Bend, and the Joint Office. There could be that coordination aspect. So, they might be involved, but their level of responsibility and involvement may, may change significantly based on the type of the project. That's kind of piece number one. Piece number two is, as we, as we gain more capacity, as you know, for example, Whitney's currently also serving as the PIO, and Eric Crop is currently also serving as the Interim Health Services Director. And now I'm serving as, as treasurer and soon tax collector. As we all have these different, different roles and responsibilities-
Dave Dune Land use-
Yeah. And Dave, well, Dave's got three different attorney hats on, soon, yes, his, his and two others. As that capacity emerges, we will continuously adjust our workloads to, to either take on these projects or to provide support or coordination with, with this person. Because we don't want to be, have it be overwhelming from day one, is certainly the point. Yes. And this list will change, of course, over time.
So, are we looking at doing this as of the first July?
Our goal would be to initiate a recruitment as soon as possible, if approved by the board. But to expect that we would have somebody start before June is, is probably unrealistic. It's possible. And that's our hope, is that somebody would start as, as soon as possible. I, I, our hope, I think our hope would be as late as July. And the reason we're asking now is just that we, we hear, see, feel the importance of a number of these projects to get them off the ground, especially with, for example, the CPACE hearing coming up in just a couple of weeks. Once that's adopted, there, if it's not by emergency, we don't know. We might need to begin that coordination work immediately, among several of the others. Any, any thoughts, Whitney?
No, I think that's spot on. We're about four to six weeks out on the remodel of space that would house this person. And obviously, we can get creative. But I think we're, we're looking to move forward and hopefully align those pieces as soon as we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so really, if we can get someone in July 1st, we're really doing good. How long of a, it's just a quick little remodel, isn't it?
It should be fairly straightforward.
It should be.
But as you know, that space has a lot of items in it, and so we're going to need to clear that space, and then the team will come in and hopefully do some quick work there.
Three-ring binders.
Yes.
Donating.
Oh, boy.
So, you know, another big-picture thought here. So Deschutes County, I'm just thinking the last 10 years that I've been involved, it hasn't been kind of moving in so many pieces all at the same time. So this is going to be valuable commitment. So, because the goal has been to, you know, not expand our staff too much, if possible, right? I mean, just the concept, provide cost-effective services for everybody, you know, in a timely and whatever fashion. And all of a sudden, it's just so many things are moving at the same time. So I do support this position enthusiastically, knowing that we've got to stay on top of it, too, because if we lose track of what we're doing, or we didn't get response at the right time, and we just start, everybody starts to look bad, too. So this is a moment in time to be able to, you know, provide you with the resources you need and the whole front office, to be able to stay on top of these big things changing. I just think of the transition to electric cars, you're kind of jumping a whole topic here, but, I mean, it looked like it was coming, it looked like it was coming, and all of a sudden, it may be here, and it's going to happen fast. So things are really dynamic right now.
So you didn't ask for a motion or anything, did I?
Sounds like we're seeking consideration of your support, and if we receive that support, we'll come back next week with a resolution on your consent agenda, I believe. And so just seeking support to move forward with that process today. Is that right, Dave?
Yeah, I assume that would require a budget adjustment. I assume that would require a budget adjustment, so that would be the resolution, would be to authorize the position and the budget piece of it.
But really, if they're not going to start till July 1st, in a perfect world...
Well, I think Nick said June 1, perhaps.
Well, he's, I know, but I'm going like, well, four to six weeks to get something done, and, yeah, and we're, what is it, April 4th, so that's like the end of May. Yeah. I mean, if we're lucky, we could get it June 1st.
June is optimistic.
Right. It's always nice to be optimistic, isn't it? In today's world, yes.
Well, and I would be comfortable saying, you know, next fiscal year's budget and not doing it right at the end of this year, because, I mean, that is just a couple weeks' timeframe. Just schedule it into next year's budget as a, you know, another FTE.
I would think a minutes motion today is sufficient to authorize that additional position, and it'll get addressed through the budget process.
Okay.
But, I mean, there's also things like the office remodel, you know, in preparation for this position that...
That's only $6,500, so surely we have that somewhere.
So we don't, we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to...
They have a building improvement fund that is part of your annual budget process for those smaller types of projects.
Okay. Okay. I mean...
So a minutes motion would be great, if you wish to do that, and then we'll address it to the budget, and if it doesn't begin until July 1st, we could still initiate the recruitment. We just identify it as starting July 1st, which is great, and then if we select somebody, they have adequate time to provide notice to wherever they may be, and...
Yes.
We'll be in good shape, yeah.
So could I have a small motion, then? A teeny motion?
So, yeah, I'll move, support, yeah, move, adding FTE for administrative, well, I'm sorry, the terminology.
There's a terminology.
Yeah.
Manager.
What is it?
Strategic Initiatives Manager.
Strategic Initiatives Manager for the Administrative Office, starting July 1st.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
So that's preapproving next year's budget for something already.
Okay. Laura?
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Laura Skundrick, Administration. So at the Board's request and in advance of this year's video lottery allocation discussion, I'm back with an overview of our current service partner program. So this is a program that was established in 2013 as a way to support economic development by supporting its contributing factors, such as workforce development and community health and welfare. This program is currently made up of community groups and nonprofit organizations that fit into at least one of these three criteria, is a mandated or sole-source provider, was initiated by Deschutes County, or that the termination of that service would require Deschutes County to assume additional responsibilities. So as a reminder, there are currently 13 service partners in our program, and in your materials today include reports submitted by each of those, which summarizes their fiscal year '22 current-year outcomes, showing what they've been able to achieve throughout the year with the support of this funding, as well as their fiscal year '23 requests are included in those. So these reports are typically brought to the Board during the video lottery allocation exercise, so you'll be seeing these reports again shortly. So based on what the Board approves during that video lottery discussion, our service partners then work with staff to establish measurements that are used throughout the year and then report it on quarterly. And for monitoring of the program throughout the year, we have a partnership with Health Services. So our Public Health Management Analyst, Sarah Hudson, does all of the direct communication with our service partners, and she is with us today on Zoom. So she can speak to what that monitoring and reporting looks like throughout the year for us.
Yes, hello, everyone. I'm Sarah Hudson, Public Health Management Analyst. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, thank you so much, Sarah.
Okay. Great. So just to kind of give an overview of what my role does with regard to the Service Partner Program, really serving in a monitor, monitoring and an evaluation role. So acts as the primary liaison for ongoing communication with all of the grantees. So I notify the grantees about the awards after those allocations are decided, participate in site tours and attend community events, offer periodic technical assistance. A big component is meeting with each of the grantees to develop a work plan and budget for the current fiscal year, working with Laura to review and approve those work plans and budgets. I submit contract requests and work with the Deschutes County Health Services Contract Specialist to finalize those. And we review progress toward work plan deliverables quarterly, as Laura mentioned. So each of the grantees submits a quarterly report, and we just monitor progress toward activities and outcomes that were specified and outlined in those meetings at the start of the fiscal year about what the work plans would contain, and then recommend payment of funds, or if the grantees aren't on track with their activities and outcomes, work with Laura to provide updates or kind of monitor what that would look like moving forward, including if we had to make adjustment to payment in any sort of way. So, and then with the results of investment, help kind of compile those documents, provide technical assistance to the grantees, and have for review for you all. So that's kind of a snapshot of the Management Analyst role.
Great, thank you.
All right, so, thank you, Sarah. If the Board would like, we're happy to walk through what the funding provides for each service partner for the current fiscal year, or we can stop here and answer any questions, if you'd like, before moving forward.
I noticed it's an increase of $38,500 from last year. That's, that's a lot. I mean, that's...
For this current fiscal year, is that what you're...
Right, yeah. The 36, 326,500 over the 288,000, yeah. That's a big increase.
It was a big increase. I do believe that in the 2020 and 2021 year, we erred on the side of...
Caution?
Being conservative. We didn't know how the video lottery gaming terminals were going to, or if they were going to come back, as bars and restaurants had closed for quite some time. So I do believe we kind of, you'll see that it, the total amount decreased about $5,000 in that first year, and then decreased again in 2021 slightly. So I think back in planning for fiscal year 2022, we were feeling confident that the terminals had bounced back actually quite a bit higher than we were even expecting. So I think that's the explanation for that. And I think many of the service partners had seen many impacts from COVID, and so were requesting higher amounts as well.
Okay.
The request from a number of organizations has jumped significantly.
Yes.
So one of the themes here is stabilizing people's lives, emergency food, clothing, and shelter, children and seniors, you know, as you go through all these things. Upper Deschutes Watershed has done a great job coming back, showing how much they can leverage those dollars. So there's kind of reasons why each one of them has been there. It's been really great relationship with each service provider and association here.
I do have a question on the first one, Council on Aging, and it said, a drive-through hot lunch service in Bend Sisters and Lapointe three times a week, and then Redmond deliveries as well. Does that mean they take things to Redmond, too?
I might, Sarah, do you know the details of that program? They deliver to Redmond?
I would have to follow up with them specifically, just because I don't want to misspeak about the extent of those services, but I do know, yeah, that Redmond is within their service area as well. But we can follow up to find out those particulars, if that's of interest.
Those drive-through services were very much COVID-related, so they probably switched gears already again and doing it a little different.
I know Redmond is wanting to update their kitchen. They're working on that. And their kitchen, they've gotten, what, $250,000 from the City of Redmond, they've gotten $50,000 in a private donation, and they're asking us to help with that kitchen. So I just was curious.
Sure.
So are you prepared to go through each one, some bullet points?
Yes.
Because, I mean, we do have this, too, so...
Yes.
But, yeah, if you're ready for that, we can, it'll help us kind of think through each one.
Yes, just kind of the highlights of what the funding provides. So for Council on Aging, this year, they received $40,000. The funding supports .6 of 3.2 FTE that supports nutrition programs such as Meals on Wheels and Congregate Dining, as well as supporting the recruiting and training and coordination of volunteers. So from July of 2021 to January of 2022, which you'll notice, a lot of this data is cut short only because we asked for data back in February. So until January 2022, they served and delivered more than 47,895 meals to more than 991 unduplicated clients.
Mm-hmm.
So I can continue?
Sure, please go ahead, Laura.
Okay. So Mountain Star received $20,000. This supports .4 of 3.6 FTE to support their Relief Nursery Therapeutic Early Childhood Center in Bend. So from July to February in 2022, they provided therapeutic early childhood classes, home visiting, parent support, and transportation for 47 children ages zero to three. Their safety net outreach services reached 47 children and their families, and 100% of the children enrolled in these services remained safe from confirmed cases of abuse and neglect during this timeframe. JbarJ received $20,000. This supports .2 of 3.8 FTE, Case Manager, to support the Runaway and Homeless Youth Emergency Shelter. So from July to January, they provided 654 nights of emergency shelter, crisis intervention, and family mediation to more than 26 youth ages 12 to 20. 86% of youth accessing shelter and crisis intervention and/or mediation were reconnected with family or other safe and stable living environments when they left the program. The Redmond Senior Center received $9,000. This supports a minimum of 1.8% of total annual cost for their Meals on Wheels and home food delivery service for seniors in Redmond, and they currently provide 120 meals per day and are looking to expand that in this coming year. The Kids Center receives $30,000. This supports .16 of 1 FTE medical examiner to conduct consultations and medical evaluations of suspected victims of child abuse. From July to March of 2022, they performed medical assessments for all 198 children referred. 100% of child abuse assessments were cross-reported to DHS and law enforcement. 100% of cases accepted by the DA's office for prosecution are supported with expert witness testimony, and that was 20 cases were accepted. And every child and their family served with a medical evaluation received additional services, including family advocacy and a therapy referral as appropriate. The Latino Community Association received $30,000. This supports 8% of their Healthy Families and Family Empowerment Program costs, and this year, that included health insurance and COVID wraparound assistance for 300 clients, low-cost dental services for 50 clients, provided referrals for 350 clients, 100 free legal consultations, and citizenship assistance for 25 clients. So for Bethlehem Inn, they received $40,000, which supports .73 of 1 FTE Kitchen Manager and .16 of 1 FTE Kitchen Steward to prepare and serve meals as part of the meal program. 100% of their residents are provided three nutritious meals daily, and from July to February, that was 298 residents and approximately 37,644 meals served. So family...
That's a lot of cooking. You can see how to do that.
Yes, it is.
That's what Gwen was saying the other day, if you want to go in, and, yes.
Family Access Network received $17,500. This supports .37 of .47 FTE Fan Advocate at Juniper Elementary School this year to connect children and family members to basic need resources. From July to March, they connected 241 children and family members to basic need resources. Saving Grace received $20,000. This provides .25 of 1.39 FTE to supervise staff who facilitate supervised visits and safe exchanges for families that have experienced domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, and/or child sexual abuse. From July to March, they served 64 families, which is a 28% increase in families served in that same timeframe from last year, and they facilitated 600 supervised visits and over 300 safe exchanges. The Central Oregon Veterans and Community Outreach, otherwise known as COVO, received $30,000 to support .6 of 1.5 FTE Outreach Coordinator. From July to March, they made 2,243 contact with homeless and low-income people visiting the center, 1,403 contact with homeless people in camps, and served 47 veterans that weren't already being served by COVO. The Court Appointed Special Advocates of Central Oregon, otherwise known as CASA, received $30,000 to support .5 of 7.1 FTE program staff to train and support CASA volunteers for children birth through age 18. From July through March, there were 280 children in Deschutes County Foster Care, and during that timeframe, an average of 239 of children referred by the court have been assigned CASA. Healthy Beginnings received $20,000, which provides .4 of 1.3 FTE to deliver a minimum of one in-person or virtual screening per month with a strategic effort to engage preschools and childcare centers in high, free, and reduced lunch school areas. So from July to March, they provided 256 evidence-based screenings in development behavior, hearing, and vision at preschool sites, and screening results were sent to medical providers, families, and shared with teachers to ensure closed-loop communication. 91 referrals were made during that timeframe. Yes, that was our last one.
So Upper Deschutes Watershed Council doesn't have a page, or...
So they actually, we have referred to them as a service partner, but due to kind of the scope of their projects and kind of separate monitoring that has happened in the
Yeah, there's no way the metrics are going to come out the same...
Yeah, it's kind of a...
As all these.
Yes, exactly. So typically, they have come and presented to the Board, as you remember, annually, instead of reporting with written court... with written quarterly reports.
Well, I noticed that CASA had a twenty-seven percent increase, um, over the time of the pandemic and children in foster care. They're, they're asking for five thousand more. So it's, it still seems like having assigned, only two hundred and thirty-nine of them have an assigned CASA and yet there are approximately almost three hundred. They're still short seventy. I wonder how we could help them out more.
I'm not sure. Sarah, um, as the, as the kind of direct contact with them might be able to speak to this, um, a little bit greater, but in my experience with them, I believe it's just the lack of, uh, volunteers really. And Sarah, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're trying to lower the caseloads of each of those, uh, volunteers, but they obviously need more.
Yeah, that's exactly right. They, um, they have a, a really high demand, but because of volunteer turnover, um, or the availability of volunteers, it's hard to support, um, just how high that caseload is.
Okay. I mean, it's just, that's fifty-six foster kids that are sitting out there. That's really sad.
It is sad.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Something that would be like a, another dataset that would be really helpful for me to connect with these, um, these re-applications or these renewals is, um, the ARPA, the ARPA, the ARPA data. There are a number of these organizations that we've made some pretty substantial ARPA investments in. So, you know, if we, if we made a really big ARPA investment and then they're asking for more than they asked for last year, I would, it would be easier for me to say, you know, we're going to give you what we gave you last year. Um, and, and, you know, we, we, we tried to, we, we tried to, you know, help you in a very important and significant and strategic way somewhere else, but these, these dollars are, um, yeah, they are limited and, you know, it's, and, uh, to, to jump from two hundred eighty-eight thousand to three hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred this year is, it does seem like a lot to me.
Sure. And I, I apologize. We do have, uh, that information. It was, um, it's a separate report that, uh, we plan to include with the video lottery allocation. And I apologize for not including it today, but-
No, it's okay.
We will have that, um, for your consideration with funding for next year.
Remember, we did three hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the Council on the Aging, just so they could have, be totally funded with ARPA dollars. It was an extra twenty-seven thousand that we gave at that point in time. Um, that, that got their project funded, which was, you know, important at that moment. But they are asking for another ten thousand here.
Sure. Yes, and while, um, I, I obviously didn't see the, um, ARPA applications or know exactly what, uh, they were funded. Obviously, the service partner programs are, they're funding a very specific, you know, uh, position and program, but I agree that that would be helpful for you to see.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, and I'm not saying that, yeah, you know, in that example, I'm not saying that a, you know, work on a facility in a commercial kitchen takes the place of, you know, funding, um, you know, a slice of FTE to provide services, but, um, just, just knowing what we've, we've done for some of those organizations, it, it, um, it would, you know, not, it, it, it's complicated because, you know, not everyone asked for an increase this year. And I'm sure that all of these, all of these organizations could benefit from an increase. So, you know, sorting through, you know, who's, who's increase, um, you know, whose increase we would, we would want to, we, we feel is absolutely necessary to support that, that ARPA information. It does, you know, it would be a significant factor in my, in the back of my head.
Sure, absolutely. I'm happy to send that to you separately as well before, if you'd like to look at it.
Thank you.
It's just like Morning Star is only asking for an eight percent increase, that's sixteen hundred. But you know what? Are they just opening up in Lapine? Aren't they? And what I really, what I love about their comments though, you said, is they actually raised one point two in, uh, private investment for every one dollar government investment. So they really are reaching the community and their, um, their program is acknowledged by the community.
Yeah.
But yeah, if, if perhaps, I don't know.
And we did charge them sixty thousand bucks for that piece of land.
Yeah.
But I'll, I mean, you know, and then, you know, we like to go even more history. We also, they were one of the recipients of the ARPA childcare investment. So it's just, I mean, there's a lot of-
Very complex.
There's a lot of, you know, each one of these organizations, we have a, a very, um, there, there's a lot of touches and multiple, and, you know, multiple layers of, of fiscal engagement and it, it, it'd be helpful to be able to see some of that kind of in-
Absolutely.
As a whole package.
Well, it's great to see Jbar J doesn't ask for an increase. And I know they actually had that major horse show, you know, the classic on the grass this year. And I think the attendance was phenomenal. So, yeah, it was an amazing, you know, it's an amazing venue. And everyone from all over, actually the country comes to, um, participate. So I was, I was really happy to see that fundraiser. And then I think, um, Saturday night was the Latino founded, um, their fundraiser and it said on the radio, they made like seventy-seven thousand or something. So that's great. I noticed we're just contributing a small portion to their bottom line.
Well, and this is the Video Lottery Fund, which we do economic development efforts and the Arts and Culture Grants and there, you know, there's a whole, remembering that's the fund and all the different parts and pieces that we're setting up for, for that discussion.
Yes, this is one, one piece of that. So I'll be back, um, kind of looking forward. I'll be back later this month, uh, to kind of go through and do that line-by-line exercise. Um, so this is kind of just a larger, um, look at the service partner program specifically. And, um, as Whitney mentioned last week, we can, um, we can still move forward and kind of, um, set aside funding as well if there are, you know, still questions moving forward. So, um, don't have to make any big decisions today, but, um, just more information for you as we move forward.
Now, thank you so much for the details of what they've accomplished this last year. It's, I think it's really important. And Sarah, thank you. Did, did you have anything else that you noticed in, um, from your point of view that we should be aware of?
Yeah, I guess the, the one thing I would just want to point out, and I think we've touched upon it already, is in, in many cases, these requests are to fund a portion of FTE, which is a fixed cost. And I think with just how competitive the labor market is, um, and the challenge of attracting and retaining, um, employees, that's kind of a, a component of the request. Just to think about, um, as, um, in consideration moving forward.
Thank you for pointing that out. We know how challenging FTE, um, can be in today's market. So thank you.
So one of the thought is, I know that, uh, the state legislature, I think AOC helped, uh, kind of doing a survey of all the way video lottery dollars were spent around the state. That was a couple of years ago. Could you just do a little research and find if, see if we can find that again? Maybe it's just a link or maybe it was a report by AOC or something. Uh, just as a reminder, the different ways that these dollars are spent.
Yeah, that would be interesting to see.
Yeah, there we go. And it was before COVID too, so this is-
Oh, sure. Okay.
It's a different, different view of the world.
A little different.
Great. Are there any other questions then? So I think we should be good, Laura.
So we'll, we will come back to do the considerations on the, on the amounts.
Exactly.
On what date?
Um, well, uh, we are prepared to come back to the board. We could come back as early as next week. I was kind of waiting to see if we wanted any, any additional outreach with any organizations before coming back to you for that. So, um, unless there's anything else the board would like to see on that day, then we could, uh, plan to come back next week.
I, I, um, you know, the one, the one other strand I want to reconnect here is, was the discussion about converting some of those, uh, special projects partner, special projects grantees into service partners. And we wanted to see the totality of what we had, um, before we considered that. And so I, I guess I'd just like to ask the other commissioners what, uh, what else they want to see or know before we have that discussion.
What is our projected, um, funding supposed to be for, um?
In, for incoming revenue for February?
Right, yes.
The state projected one million eighty thousand.
Okay, one million eighty thousand. Okay. So, and there's a lot of things that go into that, isn't there? Like the, um, EDCO funding and down in, down that list.
Yep, exactly.
So we probably really need to look at the whole list and see. And then we've got to be conservative just in case it doesn't come in over a million.
How does one million eighty thousand compare to what we received last year?
Um, I believe it's about a fifty thousand dollar increase they're projecting.
And we still have a, a reserve of something in the range of four hundred thousand dollars? Is that?
That's right. Um, it might be a little bit lower at this point now that we kind of, um, allocated some of those dollars, but, um, yes, we had contingency that will roll over and then the unbudgeted, uh, allocated funds. It will all roll over.
Have we done the last grant cycle award?
Uh, no, that will be coming to you probably next week as well.
Okay, good. Cause we need to do that. We need to get that money out as soon as we can. Okay, great.
So for discussion, Commissioner Chang, uh, Deschutes County, Deschutes Forest Collaboratives, not counties, but Forest Collaborative. That's one proposal for a service partner funding?
Uh, yep. The, the three that we had were, um, Friends of the Children, uh, Deschutes Collaborative Forest Project and Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative. Those were the three service, uh, the, the three special projects that we awarded last year.
So for both of the collaboratives, is that a long-term investment in like three, five, 10 years? Cause that's kind of what I'm thinking here, you know, is that, do, do we want to be doing collaborative work like that 10 years from now? As I'm just looking for ways to calibrate the thought.
Uh, we have, you know, uh, on the forest front, for example, we have several hundred thousand acres of forests that need to be treated. On the, uh, basin front, there's over a hundred miles of canal piping projects that need to be moved along and thousands of on-farm efficiency, uh, conversions that need to be done. I think that those are all pretty long-term projects.
So for forest management, see, I mean, I'm just kind of lukewarm about thinking of them as a service partner long-term. As in, I don't mind funding them year by year, but I, I, it, yeah, I mean, it, it's a table. Everybody come to the table. Let's all agree on what we're going to do here.
You, you don't, you don't see the value? That's-
Oh, no. I'm saying five and 10 years from now. I'm not drawing a hard line on that. I'm just thinking, are we, for it to be a service partner means we're going to go hire somebody and you're going to provide this service. We don't see, uh, you know, child development or senior poverty needs going away. To set up long-term and a collaborative effort, I mean, i- is it putting it in the right category? And as I say, it's, if it's the right thing right now, is it going to be the right thing 10 years ago?
The Upper Deschutes Watershed Council is, you know, the, the things that these two groups do for us that are critically important to our community and our economy, which is one of the drivers behind our lottery dollars, uh, or one of the things, the stated purposes of the use of our lottery dollars are, um, by preventing high severity wildfire, we are preventing massive catastrophic disruption to our local economy. You're also preserving a, the, an asset, the recreational lands in the national forests that are a critical driver of our local economy. For the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, um, drought resiliency, uh, is going to be fundamentally important to, uh, our local economy in this region for, you know, the foreseeable future. So I don't see how those are not, uh, legitimate things that we would expend resources on, uh, through this program since we're, we're concerned about the economic health of our community.
Yeah. So as I say, I'm, I'm searching, looking for common ground, trying to understand it. Uh, you know, as I say, those are both good, serious topics, you know, for twenty thousand dollars, uh, is it better just to go do something instead of getting everybody around the table talking about doing something? And I understand it's the social license to do it.
Twenty thousand dollars, you know, you can ask Ed treating, treating land at, you know, nine hundred, a thousand, eleven hundred dollars per acre. Uh, twenty thousand dollars buys you jack. Right. But if you get the social license to move forward with, for, with work, then you can, then you can leverage tens of millions of dollars of federal investment to actually get some, get some acres treated.
Well, yeah, and then, I mean, that's, yeah. So there's other philosophical differences there. I mean, federal investment in forests is different than local for, yeah. So, and we, we've been through some of that.
Without the social license, you don't get the federal.
No, it's all good. I, as I say, I'm just trying to get grounded in this.
Well, I know the Friends of the Children is incredibly expensive, but their, um, numbers of what they accomplish is truly great because the people that work with those children are actually paid and, um, there's a continuity. And I think that's so important for children's lives. So anyway, thank you, Laura, if you can come back. We actually have a four o'clock, so we, we've got a, um, get on-
Got to be done with that topic?
Yes, we do at this moment, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. We'll see you then next week.
If possible, just one quick update that I mentioned with the board this morning on, on Planning Commission and then-
Yes.
Hopefully one quick executive session relatively.
Are you okay?
Sure.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Members of the Commission, Peter Witkowski, Community Development Director. This item under other items pertains to the Sisters Area Planning Commission vacancy, which is being vacated by, uh, Commissioner Steve Swisher, who turns out on June thirtieth of this year. Staff with the support of Human Resources submitted a four-week recruitment, which closed on the thirty-first. And we received two applicants. Uh, one, uh, was, excuse me, one was from Dirk Van Howling. And the second one was from Jack Farley. And so staff similar to our, our last meeting on a planning commission vacancy that was at large is looking for board direction on how you would like to, uh, go through the, execute the interview process, uh, with staff. Presumably, uh, in the past, we've also utilized the planning commission chairperson and, uh, one or two commissioners, but I, it's totally open to your discretion. So not, and not a huge rush. The Commissioner Swisher doesn't term out until June thirtieth. So we can certainly schedule interviews around your schedule, um, you know, at a convenient time. So, uh, looking for any input you would have.
And Peter, I'll just offer that based on the conversation we had this morning, we have confirmed that one applicant does live in Sisters. Um, and the other is in the Tumalo area. And we can share other details offline, but, uh, but-
That's correct.
One does live in, in the Tollgate area.
Okay. And don't forget that, um, Steve Swisher wants carrot cake at his retirement party.
That is duly noted.
I-
That's duly noted.
I gotta, I gotta remember that, so.
We have, uh, executed that request and it is, it will occur.
Okay, probably with cream cheese frosting. That's probably the best way.
The only way.
I, and I could bake it if we need, yeah. Wouldn't that be a shock? Me cook, bake a cake. Anyway, I do have a recipe. Okay, well, he's served for quite a while, so, um, can we do something then in a couple, like two weeks or three weeks? I know that Jack Farley is out of town this week.
Well, Jack, does, so Jack doesn't live in the zone.
No, he lives in Tumalo.
Supposed to, this, this seat is supposed to represent. Is that, is that accurate?
Correct, on both accounts.
Okay. So.
Oh, I'd like to talk to them both. Uh, you know, I mean, this is two applicants for a seat and, um, yeah. We can make a decision farther down the way. So, and then, yeah, the process of, do we want the chair to do it or do we all want to talk to them?
But then again, I know people in Tumalo that were upset that we don't have a- But then again, I know people in Tumalo that were upset that we don't have a director from Tumalo. And if we're going to interview someone from Tumalo, should it be, should that have been part of it?
Well, and yeah, that, I'm, I'm going with that information, too. The fact that, you know, there's a zone there that's kind of, if, yeah, it could be at-large, but there's no Tumalo zone. So, I mean, I, I have that information also, I guess.
And what, if I may, what I communicated on this topic in the past is, you know, the last recruitment that we had was promoted at-large, and we did, the, the board did ultimately select somebody from, who actually lives in Bend. But the, to the extent that there's an interest in looking at the composition of the planning commission geographically, which I think the board does regularly, a year from now, in June of 2023, two planning commissioners will term out. And one is from the Bend area, and one is an at-large. And so, to the, again, I will probably be in the seat here a year from now, asking, you know, about the recruitment process. So, I know that Nick in the past, and I'm just continuing that, is always, you know, will always make a point of giving the board an understanding of kind of where the commission is geographically, because it's, as it states in our codes. To the greatest degree possible, the planning commission should represent the geographic regions of our county. So, to the extent that that's in the back of your mind, know that in years, in a year's time, there'll be an at-large position that's vacant, that the board could find that they're interested in targeting a certain area or not. You may want to see who, who comes from the various areas of our county, and then one that's specifically Bend area.
Well, it's wonderful to have two people applying for this one seat. As I say, I'm still kind of, I'd love to talk to them both. I don't, you know, we had done a, I think, two, two commissioners did the interview, and then I ended up doing it, too, because it was kind of split. But we got there pretty easily after that. So, I'm interested in talking to both of them.
Is the board interested? Should we utilize the same format as we did about a month ago?
I am really glad these two individuals applied for this, this position. I'm frankly, I'm, I'm quite surprised we didn't hear from more people in the Sisters area. So, there's, there's a part of me that is interested in opening this back up and, and, you know, kind of welcoming some additional applicants. But, you know, I'd also, this whole question of, you know, kind of, like, how do we deal with the grievance of people from Tumalo that there's not a Tumalo area representative? I, I'd also like to both see the map of, you know, kind of where these zones fall and what their boundaries are, and hear a little bit more about how they were, how they were drawn, you know? Is it based on population or land area or, or something else? And look, look at that alongside the question of kind of who, those positions that are going to open up in 2023, to try to understand how we get a good geographic representation before we proceed with, with these two.
I can certainly do that. There's a, there's a map that we have in the Planning Commission Policy and Procedures Manual, the code, the Deschutes County Code that pertains to the planning commission, identifies basically specific township and ranges. And, you know, I haven't looked at the legislative history, but I can only imagine that there's always been an emphasis at the origin of the planning commission, just given the diversity geographically of our county, to ensure a South County representative, a Sisters Area representative, Redmond, and then Representative, just Bend being our largest metropolitan area, two members there, and then an out, you know, a one member there, and then I think two at-large positions. So, I can certainly provide that. I can give you, next day or so, I can give you more context of the code, look a little bit at the legislative history, give you that map. And then, if you would like, I can, I can come back on Wednesday, or if you want to look at that information and continue to discuss kind of how you'd like to actually...
Peter, I, I hate to say this, but I, I think we should open it back up, because Steve is good through the end of June.
Correct.
And if we could just, okay, it's April 4th. If we could give it till like May 4th, and then if, you know, or three weeks, maybe even just three weeks. But just so that the community knows, we really did want to get candidates from Sisters, that's, you know, West, West Deschutes County.
Great. We can, I think we can certainly do another, maybe another press release, and then I can coordinate with
Because normally, we get a lot of response, and maybe it was just a timing issue. Maybe they were watching March Madness. I don't know.
Yeah, there's just so many people in the Sisters area who care about land use issues. I'm really, I'm just kind of puzzled by
Great. That's the will of, of the board. I can certainly execute that, and then also provide you the background information, Commissioner, to all the commissioners regarding
That would be great.
our context of the code and the, and the spatial arrangement.
Sorry to...
Township and range seems like a pretty antiquated way to, to chunk this up. But that's just my perspective.
Yeah. And we mapped it, so it's, it's, that's a little user-friendly then.
Okay, okay.
Then the specifications. Well, great. Thank you. That's all I needed.
Sorry to
No, no.
Put that back on you.
Happy to execute that plan. So, I'll do it till the end of the month.
Sure, the end of the month should be.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, are there any other items? I know.
I'll just really, I didn't, I didn't know that there, that people had a thing at four o'clock, but I'll briefly mention that I went to Medford to visit Rogue Retreat's various homeless facilities and operations on Friday. And I was incredibly impressed by the way that they, they weave together shelter and transitional housing with a range of supportive services to really move lots and lots of people on the path to stabilizing their lives and getting to a better place where they have permanent housing outside of Rogue Retreat and are gainfully employed and doing other good things.
Great, thank you for that. And we actually were at Bethlehem Inn in Redmond, and, you know, we put a lot of dollars into that project, and it was a great, great event, having it there. Their kitchen's still under construction, but people are moving in, and it's, it's really, it's positive. So, I want to thank Gwen and her entire team for all the work that they do. Is that it? So, now we have Executive, or?
Two D.
Two D, okay. Can we just have a one-second break?